Okay, we're going to start the town of Sangerville Board of Selecting meeting Wednesday, July 31st, and I have 4:59 PM. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is approval of the minutes, July 17, 2019, special meeting, and July 23rd, 2019, emergency meeting.
Make motion to approve both A and B.
Second. Who's in favor? Three in favor. Item two.
Two and two. I knew I had one of them messed up.
Two A and two B.
I'm sorry.
Review the treasurer's warrants, payroll 61, 62, accounts payable 58, 59, 60, and 63. Make a motion to approve A and B as read.
And second?
Those in favor? All three. Item four is... Correct.
Yay!
We have an open session, and we have a few, a number of guests, so we'll start with this young lady in the front.
I have so many. I don't know. I only have two minutes.
You only have two minutes, so...
Okay, real quick. Do you have a town pick up the leaves in the spring?
No.
Okay. Two, taxes. I am here for a tax abatement. I don't know if that's on the list to talk about later?
Yes.
Okay, skip that. Roads, the sidewalk in front of my street on Pleasant Avenue. I know it's a state road, but I don't know who the DOT contact person is. I contacted DOT, they said there isn't money. The state doesn't have money, but yet Dexter's getting new sidewalks left and right, so I don't understand how they allocate money for sidewalks. Because there are, I live right there, there's a million people that go up and down the street, walk to the store constantly. The sidewalk's on the wrong side, and the catch basin's wrong. So there's like two major things that need to be addressed. I don't know if that's something you care about?
Well, it's not about furby. We don't, we don't have any of that.
But it's a road through Sangerville, where Sangerville citizens walk every day, many, many, many. One has been hit by a car on that area. It's a dangerous space. They don't even deliver mail because it's dangerous. Because the sidewalk's on the wrong side of the street. So I will take it up with DOT if you could tell me who it is that I need to speak with. You should know that.
I have a Guilford number in my rolodex. I can go get it for her.
Oh, 941-2500.
Okay, alright.
That's what you did right for the guy at the DOT.
Okay, water quality in Sangerville is horrible. I just want to speak out and say that. It's too chlorinated. It is orange at my house. It costs thirteen to fifteen hundred dollars to replace the line. What?
We have a drilled well.
Who had the drill well?
Town, the town water supply has a drilled well.
Right, but it's too chlorinated. My water is chlorinated. I don't know why, and it's also orange. And the next thing is sewer. I continue to pay for sewer, and I don't have sewer service, and it's fifty dollars and sixty cents I think I just paid. I don't even have any water leaving my building, and I don't think I should have to pay for that. Just wanted to bring that up. Okay, that's it.
Who else? Would you like to speak, Butch, or you want to wait till we get to roads, or did you have something you wanted to say? Butch, it's your turn.
I'm just waiting to see what's going on here.
Okay. Mr. Martin?
Well, I'll wait until you get to the item five. Okay, that's about the time.
Okay. Mr. Pitts, item five. Okay, we're stacking them up right at five. Ma'am?
Yes.
Would you like to speak?
Yes, I would.
Alright.
I live at 989 Doughty Hill Road. Across the street from me is a very large field. It belongs to Mrs. Wells. She lives at 892 Doughty Hill Road, and in the wintertime, I get all her snow from that field. And this past winter, you had to send down buckets, those big giant buckets to move it. You also moved one of my big rocks on the rock wall. I called about it, but no one ever came. I don't really give a damn about that, if I'm English, but I do care about the snow coming across the street from that field into my property. It, it, it just blows in there. It's on that corner, on that shop corner, before you get to what they used to call the block. And I live right there on that corner, and that snow comes right straight across the road, right into my yard. And last year, I had drips of seven, anywhere from seven to nine feet deep. I couldn't even see out my kitchen windows at one time. And I would like either the town or Mrs. Wells, I don't care which one, but I would like for them to put up a snow fence. I believe that if a snow fence was put up there, that that would defer all that snow from coming into my yard. And at least that you wouldn't have to send down big buckets to clean that corner. This past year, you had twice, maybe three times, to send big buckets down to clean that corner out because it was impacked there when the wind blows, you can't, one traffic, one lane traffic through there. And that's a very, very dangerous road, because cars go by my house. I've seen cars, I know they're going seventy miles an hour, because I can hear them screeching their brakes before they get to the next corner to go around and up the hill. And so something needs to be done about the snow.
Alright. You're welcome. Gentlemen, behind you, would you like to speak?
He's on Josh.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Would these folks like to speak?
They're on the agenda.
They're on the agenda. Okay.
American Legion.
Alright, very good. All the way back, Mr. Robb. Okay, we're all, we got through that pretty smoothly. Onto old business. Item five, old business. Completed the paving on the Silvers Mills Road? I don't know if all of you have a chance to look at it. I drove over it. It's pretty good.
Yes.
I liked how they actually, they feathered in for the driveways.
Yeah.
Which I haven't seen that with any paving company in recent years anyway that I can remember.
Yep. They will usually, if you ask them, but...
But the only two things that I noticed was the little loops, but, so that's created a pretty good bump.
Yeah? They didn't, they didn't get it fixed good?
It's, it's a pretty decent bump. I'll just...
Probably different in your vehicle than my vehicle.
Yeah, could be.
Because I didn't do that bad.
Yeah, I drove over it. I wasn't impressed.
I've had a couple of people hit me out that it was a pretty good bump, so...
Okay.
The other thing is the transition. Coming down from, towards my house, it's not quite so bad, but going up through, and I'm not saying it's a hundred percent their fault, because we had issues there that kind of peeled up. So they did transition, I think, to where, kind of where the old pavement was, but there's that next. This far away, it had that other, maybe they didn't think to do that. Maybe it's not their fault, but that's the only kind of hiccup I saw. But I thought the road looked good. It looked smooth. Thought they did a very good job.
And they actually, they put a good amount of pavement down too. They did a real good job.
It almost, maybe it's just an optical illusion, it feels wide.
It does seem wide.
I didn't measure it, but... Yeah.
Yeah, Butch?
But that's been paved, see, twice in eight years. So it's gonna be good. We did that a few years ago, and we didn't get the crown, so it just went bad on us.
Well, it was, it was pretty bad last fall. I don't know if that was eight years. That's where it fell apart there in front of Mr. Martin.
I know what needed to be done, but while it was right there, but I'm just saying, we've got two coats on that sort of...
But that's only from the bridge, that little piece. That going all the way up through to where we, that hadn't been done in eight years. No, that was only that, that culvert area was done.
Done from the culvert up to, what's his name's driveway up there?
Yeah, that wasn't done before.
It was done about seven years, eight years ago. Yeah, Tommy was there, I was there.
I mean, a lot further than that, but...
And they, well, whatever. They ground it, and I remember, and it didn't last. It was long run, I'd you think.
So overall, I would say that was...
The time's long.
It was good.
Yeah.
I hoped to have numbers from that for you, but Roundy's hasn't sent anything, so I don't have any.
Have they been on site here? I'm dropping a hand, but has Roundy's been to McFeeters and walked it? Okay.
Well, you knew and then drove it.
And I'm gonna take some of the blame for them cutting that wrong over there, because he was on his way home that day, and he said he was gonna start looking himself, and I explained to him where I was. I told him it was, you know, to go to the end of the shim, and that's where we once just stopped. Well, he, he looked at it, and he said that this whole thing's shim.
Oh, okay. But he, when I got there, I, his name is Ben, he was very professional. I thought he, he was referencing, somebody had said to him 1.7 miles.
He says it says right on the paper that she gave him.
That's what he, he said, the slip said.
It said McFeeters.
Yeah, I would think McFeeters has got to be damn near one.
Yeah, that's what I said. Are you sure that it said McFeeters? He said, I don't know. So anyway, it was really fortunate the way it worked out.
Right. It all worked out fine.
But yeah, he was great. He had a sense of humor about it, so... Ditching and culverts on McFeeters. Where do we stand and what?
Well, the ditching is pretty well done, and the culverts are pretty well done, except for Southern's driveway is sludge.
So does that mean you cannot put a culvert there?
Not without blasting or getting the hammer.
Well, I mean, we're not gonna blast.
No.
I don't think we're gonna blast.
Is the whole thing like Seth? The whole, the whole, the paved part and the non-paved part? The whole thing?
I'm gonna say that it's probably the size of that table right there. That's all that's messing us. But it runs right up in his driveway, so it's not, I messed around with this one, and I was...
So how much of...
I didn't get out, but that one, it just isn't gonna happen.
How much of it do you need to remove? In other words, how many inches of a piece the size of this table?
It's right to the top. It's right, it's right, that's gonna be it.
So, so Rick, you never had a culvert in your driveway?
No.
Okay.
That's probably why.
No, no, I mean, I...
But honestly, that's probably why there's always been a water issue right there.
That's right.
I mean, you guys got a natural dam.
That's right.
All that water coming on the hills only got one place to go, and that's towards the house.
It's, uh, I had to do that.
Well, nothing's been done, of course, to McFeeters for thirty, forty years.
Exactly, yeah.
And what was happening is they come, there was no ditching on the other side. It filled in. So when I first bought the house in ninety-two and ninety-three, I had ten inches of water in my cellar from the runoff from the road. I'm low in on the total.
Exactly.
And then since then, there was just a little berm there you could see, and I put some landscaping stuff around. And that, my, my front lawn's an ice skating rink in the winter, but I got it out of my basement.
When you say a hammer, are you talking one that was attached to your excavator? Yeah, you're not talking this way.
No.
Not yet.
Because I was like, how is he gonna do that? Because I have run one of those. That's a long day.
I guess it'd be a long day, yeah.
I see. So can you give us an idea of what is involved in that?
I'll tell you exactly what the guy told me. He says I can rent a machine for a week, twenty-three hundred dollars. Per week.
Will you get it done in a week?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
You could do that, and we could actually get the other two places beat down too.
And if we don't do that?
And for that matter, there's also some apartment that we may be able to, might be able to coordinate on this.
Oh, that would be ideal.
If we don't do this, it seems to me like you gotta backfill all those ditches.
We're getting ourselves to backfill the ditches, but you were getting a place a while ago.
Right.
Right, I mean...
And we're, and...
You're in the same exact board with the ditch or without it?
That's what I'm saying, though. If you're, if you're Rick and you don't have a culvert going across my driveway, why do I need a ditch on my lawn?
Right.
Right. No, we didn't, if we don't, if we don't put a culvert in his driveway, he's gonna have a pond in front of his house, and that doesn't make any sense. So I would say either we finish this, or we're, we gotta backfill those ditches all the way up to, is it Mr. Klukie's?
Yeah, that's the captain.
Yeah, I mean, he's have a pond, so that doesn't make any sense, so...
Yep.
I mean, they're able to put curbing. I don't know how, you'd have to backfill everything and put curbing to direct it into the culvert.
Yeah, you're right. That might get it.
And that would, because originally, and when I complained in ninety-one or two, they were gonna put curbing. Well, we never did anything on the roads back then, and I complained every year, and there was never any money.
But the asphalt companies could do the curbing for us, yeah.
But looking at it, I mean, you're saying it doesn't look shilly then? I mean, usually shilly, you can flake that out.
Believe me, I beat on it, and there's no...
Alright, so you beat on other ledge. Do you think with a hammer on your machine will come?
I've never run a hammer. I'm not gonna let it. Never run one. But I did talk to the guy, and he says, oh, yeah. He says it's time consuming, but oh, yeah, you can beat there, but no problem.
Well, we have really, you know, we've tackled this project and tried to do it...
The right way.
The right way.
Right.
Now we're down to a ten-foot piece of ledge that's messing the whole job up.
And do you know, I mean, could we split this with Parkman? Are you not able to speak to that?
I'll have to talk to him.
Okay.
Don't have any choice.
It almost does kind of feel like we, we've gone this far, even if Parkman is only in for a third, it would probably be worth it.
On the other side of it is, is up on the other, across the road and up further. It would be nice to get rid of that piece that's sticking out of the ground.
Yep.
That, to me, just looks like a nice place to spin a plow truck right out into the woods.
Yeah.
I mean, if a wind catches that...
There's two of them. Same thing.
Yeah, so, or a car that veers off the road a little bit, that's not gonna be good either, so...
Yeah, I talked to him today. He said it's available. Come get it whenever I want, so I told him, you know, obviously I gotta...
I mean, it's gonna, the cost of backfilling, we got a culvert to pull, I mean, it's a wash probably, close. And then, and then we end up with an undesirable situation in terms of water on our road.
Yeah, exactly. We're back in the same place we was when we started.
And I also think, as far as doing curbing, you know, that's just, then the plows catch it, then it's all broken up,
then you're replacing it every X number of years.
Very expensive too.
Yeah, yeah, and...
And it's still running water right down the middle of our road.
Where you get rid of that ledge, it's gone forever, so...
That's right.
You don't need our approval to do it, but I appreciate you sharing the strategy. I, my thought is, finish it.
Go ahead with it. Yep.
Okay. Particularly the fact you're gonna clean up those other spots, that's good.
Well, I think the other ones are a pretty good safety issue, really.
Yeah, I do, yeah.
I mean, I understand there's nothing you could do about it the way you currently are, but, but if you, if you have to have that to fix Ricks, and we can also fix the safety issue at the same time, definitely money worth spending, I think.
Is there any other location there where there could be hidden ledge?
Everywhere.
No, but I mean, you haven't ditched yet.
As far as this project.
Yeah, yeah.
In other words, is there a driveway that you're, like, Rex, you didn't know until you were gonna do his culvert?
Right, his was the last one I did.
Okay, so everybody else you know...
Everything's done except for the one cross-culvered up by the only piece of, that's the only thing that isn't done.
Okay.
It deserves a culvert there, so...
Alright.
Did you get the one up by the McFeeters sign?
That's what I just said. That's the one that's left.
Okay.
That's, seems like a good strategy. It doesn't sound like it's gonna even fall us down much if you can get it.
Yeah, I know. That's excellent. 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 That's great.
That helps that.
That's a girl getting stuck between a rock and a hard rock.
Is there anything else about where we're at in this project that you want to share with us right now?
No, other than just the culvert stuff.
Okay. If, if, when you get this piece of equipment and it works the way we anticipate, when do you think we could pave it?
That shouldn't be more than another week, right? I mean, to get that, I would say I've only got one more culvert left, and I'll have that number on.
Because the next, we, the next thing is the availability of our, our paver. Even Roundy's is saying they are not much past the middle of August, right? And then they're gonna be...
If you wanted to claim the road, they have a space, and they could do it August 8th and 9th. And that's not then, that's who they contract with. After that, there's a, there's a gap in there.
Yeah, that's what he told me.
Two, three weeks.
I had a question regarding some of the ditching that, it looks to me in some cases, we have no shoulder left. Is there, is that a, is there going to be a shoulder there when we're done, or?
No, that's gonna be what it's gonna be.
But others areas, there's plenty of shoulder. I mean, I like, I went up to the western end, and that's all...
Well, it's just the in-town part that didn't, because the ledge, the way the ledge runs, we had to keep it close to the road to get any ditches, so...
Okay. So you, you were squeezed into doing that?
Oh, yeah. Especially from the top down.
So my concern is, if we reclaim and add some material, we basically need to widen the road, and we don't really have any shoulder to work with.
Why do you need to widen the road?
Well, if you raise it, it's gotta be wider or it's gonna be narrow.
Right, well, you're not gonna raise it a lot.
Well, I guess.
I mean, usually you only put six inches of soil gravel, just to grind in with what they grind up the hot top.
Okay.
They don't, they don't get down into the old stuff. You don't want that up on top. They just grind the hot top itself.
But if you add, my, my question though, if you add six, and then you're gonna have three and a half for hot top.
Right.
So we're actually, we're going up nine.
Right, but once they lay that back down, you'd be surprised what, once they grind it up, you know, when you roll it till you got it, how...
Right.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
And then you run it over a roller, it just drives right back down.
Oh, I see. So it's not, yeah, I don't...
Do you have...
We haven't had a road reclaimable, because we haven't been able to, since I've been sitting here, because we haven't had an opportunity where we had the extra money between paving, reclaiming, and laying gravel. So everything since we've been working on in the past is, we've just been shimming and paving, because you're not adding gravel, so you shouldn't reclaim, so...
I feel there's a lot of need to add gravel to most of the in-town part. I really don't feel there's a need for, from, from where it tips down over with a nice plate, we got a low spot down there. I think that ought to have some, and I think it ought to have some down with that next piece, where we talked about all the rocks up through there.
So when you're ditching though, are you finding any gravel under the road?
Well, I dug, I dug that culvert there, the last one, right by that pond today, and there's not much gravel under there, no.
So that's kind of the thought if you reclaim, if you don't add, you're gonna stir the bottom, and you're gonna mix the...
But you don't stir the bottom. You only stir the top with what you got there.
Correct, but if you don't have anything under it, you stir, you know what I mean? How deep are you gonna reclaim?
They don't, they don't go down, they don't go down like you think they do.
Everywhere, every time they've done it here in the past, been twelve inches. That's what they go down.
They go down foot, yeah.
I'm not saying that's what they have to do. I'm saying that's what they've done.
Yep. And that may, that may be what they're, what they normally do as a foot.
Right. But I mean, to me, if we don't have gravel after that six inches, I would rather add six inches so we end up with gravel...
The good product.
Rather than grab the bottom six, they ain't got nothing. If that's what we have to do, I'm not in favor of reclaiming, because I don't want to steer that into it.
Right. No, you don't. No, once you get down in there too deep, you just mess, you know, you're gonna have the same thing you got right now.
Well, so maybe we need you to build some test, drill some test holes. I mean, check some few spots.
He ditched it, he knows.
Well, you don't know what's under the roadway. The ditch, they didn't, hopefully you didn't put a lot of gravel in the ditch.
Well, same deal. I mean, they build the road, and it's gravelled out, it's kind of...
But you dug across it today, and how, what did you come up with? What, Rick?
It's not very good.
It's not?
It's not very, especially the butt. It is the worst part in the road.
Sure, sure. So Seth put in a cross-culvert, right?
Yeah, right in that ball.
Right with a...
Are there plans to develop that land on that road?
What land?
The land that they just cut the trees off of, that land?
That's my land.
That's your land? So there are no plans to develop that land. Someone told me they wanted to put an industrial park in there or something.
I think Paul and Springs Bottling is going in there.
Yeah, Paul and Springs is going in there.
Yeah, pumping stations and bottles and hot takes.
It's an inside joke.
Yeah, that's a joke. For the record.
Butch?
We have, that's twenty-one feet we've got there on that road, we've made it that. And I was wondering what, what we're gonna do. You're gonna narrow off your hot top so you get your shoulder on that side. When they grind that, can they get that right to what it's supposed to be without adding quite a bit of material?
Yeah, they can do whatever we ask them to do, but...
Well, but I mean, we can't, we can't do too much, because if we add too much materials, we're gonna get that, well, narrow in the road more than what we've got.
Right.
But you think, without doing a lot of, if you reclaim without adding a lot of material and rolling and putting gravel in, it would still work?
I think so, yeah. But we've done it.
I suppose, B and B right now isn't really in the hunt, because I guess they're too busy. But I spoke to the gentleman, Dave, and he's seen the road, I believe, and he, he thought it was a good candidate for reclaiming.
Oh, yeah.
And he, I basically, I don't think he planned on doing it. He was just sharing with me, one of the aspects was that you could re, kind of re-engineer the road. You could reslope it, re-crown it. He said you really can't do that with shim and pave as well as you can if you reclaim it, so... Beyond that, I don't, I only know what people like you or Dave tells me.
But these guys, it's so hot top, I'm gonna tell you, whatever costs them most, because they've been making money.
This guy that we're dealing with doesn't own a reclamer. But he doesn't own one. It's not costing him anything, because he has to hire that out.
Because what other pieces we've done, Flinders Hill Road, East Sangerville, we might get a year out of them. We might get three or five. We just looked at one out here on the Flinders Hill Road, and it ain't very long ago, that was paved, and now you've got wheel tracks. You've got to put, I think, I think you're gonna have to put back more hot top, ain't ya, if you grind?
No. No, but when you, when you grind, it's, it's just like doing a cement pad. When you do a cement pad, you make it as level as you can, so you know exactly what you're putting back on.
Yeah.
And that's the same idea with grinding. Once you get that level down, they know what they're only gonna put.
I'm still wondering if you can get that, if you're gonna get that, because that's what happened before when they ground the others. They could not get it, so you have to crown, and you're two percent, and that's what the enemy was, because within a year, then trucks and water start going down the wheel tracks, and then she's all done.
Right, but it's... Flinders Hills inverted them, actually.
Yeah, but that may be that it, there's no way to know that it wouldn't have been worse if you hadn't reclaimed it.
But I just watched four pieces we done, and all four pieces failed.
Well, the French's Mills Road, at least in front of my house, was reclaimed, and it's, it's...
Yeah, but they were talking a different road.
Yeah, well, and this is a different road.
Yeah, because that was all state aid and built up good, but this one...
The hard thing to do is if you do research, and you, and maybe everybody is just trying to say something, maybe that's true, but...
What's the money versus...
How do you make a decision?
Versus shimming, and then paving, or grinding, and then how much hot top, and...
There's no way to tell you that, because shim is an estimate. A shim is you riding that road and guessing that I'm gonna use so much, and I'm gonna use, there's no way to know on a shim.
Yeah, but haven't they told you somewhere near what they think it'll, it would cost?
Yeah, and they go all the way from here to here, just like every road that we do. Everybody you ask is gonna guess differently.
The only thing we can go by is their price per ton, and because their tonnage estimate is a going toss. And you really don't know until they answer the slips.
But that road's about, there's about four inches of hot top on it. We checked it two, three places, so...
I mean, I fully agree with the concept of reclaiming, but what I don't, I don't fully agree with, they, when, to me, when these guys look at the road and they say, oh, this is a good candidate, they're saying it's a good candidate because it's not all grooved, it's relatively flat, but they don't know what's under the road.
Right.
So they can't look at a road, they're looking at, from the surface up, I think that's a good candidate to reclaim. And then it's up for you, or us, or history, or whatever, to know what's under that road to determine, and now we gotta add six inches, or we gotta do something else. So if you're saying very much gravel there, I, to me, if we're gonna reclaim...
I guess, like you said, it looks to say there isn't in other places, but that's right in that ball.
Right.
So there's definitely no gravel right there.
So there's no figures on money on doing that by it?
For what?
On reclaiming?
We have figures. We have figures.
We have some.
Then...
What we don't know is how much gravel.
That's what I'm saying.
I haven't, you got a number from you yet.
That's one of the things that I've been...
Some unknown things, like Dale said.
Yep.
And I don't think they can make that with the places where it looks with all that and quite a bit of material. But if they say they can...
Well, they can, because they just grind it all up, and then you grate it, you shave it to whatever you want.
Make it whatever you want.
And then roll it.
No, that, that can happen.
Well, that's what...
Well, you better go down here, blow the ditches, and you're gonna pull that out, but, but I don't know, whatever, but...
I'd be curious to what three, I mean, if you're saying we got four or five inches of hot top there, if you put three or four inches of gravel on the road, then you know you got roughly seven, nine inches, eight, nine inches?
But once you grind it, it's gone, right? It's turned back to gravel, pretty much.
Correct, but you'd be mixing your four, grinding up the four inches of hot top, and your four inches of gravel. It all gets ground up, it all gets mixed together, and it gives you a nice base again.
Oh, okay, you're talking about adding.
Oh, yeah.
Add.
Well, you need it, you add it.
Adding gravel.
Yes.
Or, he also mentioned recycled asphalt. I don't know if it's any cheaper.
Right.
No, it's not cheaper.
Yeah, so...
Well, it's not unless you find a different source.
Exactly, yeah. Exactly, like you would mention last time.
So maybe Roundy's may, or, you know what I mean, they may know somebody, or whoever he's gonna hire to reclaim, they may have a better source.
There was quite a pile of it there in Dexter for a while. I don't know if it's still there.
Would the price change, Dale, on the hot top if the Dover plant opens? Have you asked anybody?
No idea.
Well, they're all in this, they're all in waities.
Yeah, that stuff out there on Silvers Mills all came from Bangor. The stuff on Silvers Mills all came from Bangor.
Yeah, but I'm saying I heard from a pretty good source, they might open the Dover thing. I just wanted, it would be quite a bit cheaper?
I don't know if it would or not. They usually try to stay competitive, so I doubt it'd be a lot cheaper.
Prices weren't a lot different than last year when it was open.
Last year, the Dover pit was all in, and our pavers didn't haul out of Dover.
Yeah, that's right, in the end.
Yeah, and all the way down to Sydney when it finally got cold, yeah.
If you call it fair, it's gonna cost more.
No, no.
You would think. You would think.
It costs somebody more.
Costs somebody that's...
It does, yeah.
But it doesn't, but I mean, they, they buy, where, we pay so much money, they go... But it doesn't, but I mean, they, they buy, where, we pay so much money, they go where they can get it the cheapest and. I, I know last year that plant was open and they were not hauling out of that plant.
How much last year Dale?
When, the paving we did last year.
How much was a, a ton?
I don't remember now, I wouldn't do it to you.
It wasn't a lot different than this year.
No, it's close.
But we thought because the state was doing last.
How much hot top would you put back?
What do you mean?
After three times.
Three and a half inches.
How much?
It'd be three and a half inches, yeah. You put two inches, you'd put two inches of binder and you put an inch and a half of surface over it.
So now there's a money thing.
Well, the difference is the gravel, really. It's twenty thousand dollars to reclaim it. And then it was nineteen whatever, I mean, it's twenty grand.
How much to hot top and all of that?
How much to what now?
The both layers of hot top would be.
I, we got the figures.
It varies, I mean, depending on the company.
Well, if we reclaim, it's pretty well, it's close.
Right, right.
But Raffi, you spoke to some people about extending the life of the road due to reclaiming and some of those estimates were pretty significant. It wasn't like just.
Von Tivito was sure it would be better, but he never came out and looked at the road. Pikes, thought it would be a good idea, he did look at the road. He, and he recommended if you shim, you shim with two inches instead of one. So did, um, Von Tivito. Everybody, none of them said they didn't think reclaiming was a good idea.
Right, that's what I'm saying is. That road's flat, I mean, it is a good road to reclaim.
Roundy said to me reclaiming would be ideal, but it all depends on what you got for money.
But that road would be about six inches higher then, right? You would put three of gravel.
If you put three of gravel, it's gonna be three inches higher.
And three inches of hot top. So, I'm just wondering on that high side whether shoulder, this could be narrowed up to twenty feet. So you wouldn't lose that side, be supposed to the edge, but like the Flinders Hill Road, one piece will have twenty feet. Nobody knows the difference.
Well, I don't think I, that's what I was, I don't think it's twenty feet in front of my house.
That's pretty narrow.
That one.
My duly filled it.
But we'd have three inches hot top right out to the edge. If we split the foot, we still have a little shoulder, right?
Yeah, leave six inches of shoulder on each side, what you're saying.
Could they make that on that side where there's no shoulder, they would taper that, right? Wouldn't that be better, or would it?
No, I'm assuming it'd probably be better, yeah. Then you ain't gonna have to wash off the edges where you can.
But was you thinking twenty-one feet of paving or twenty? What was you thinking for what?
I think he's got twenty-one or down there, that's what we wrote down. He got up and measured it and said twenty-one, that's what we went by.
That's pretty big savings too, floating paving off that, three and a half inches length for a mile and a half.
So these ditches when they comes down, are they, are you coordinating with what's gonna happen to the state road? Like when the water comes down this ditch?
Goes to the basin.
Goes to the catch basin, which is located where? It's right, well, there's one on the same side as mine, so if the water's gonna travel over the road and into the.
No, there's one across the street from you.
There's one across the street. Okay, so that's, and this catch basin is up to, is the state? And do they know that that's your plan? Okay, so you do.
I've, I've actually tried to talk them into putting another catch basin on the other side of the road, and I'm still waiting to hear back from them. Probably gonna shoot me down, but I tried it.
Oh, well, you give me the number, I'll call too. I think I have the number.
There's a lot of water runs down there in the winter, on the other side. Day in the winter and it's ice from.
No place for it to go.
Right, we're getting the whole road going down that right-hand side all the way to the.
It's hard to believe that all this improvement won't be an improvement. I hope, I mean, it's gonna be very disappointing if it isn't. It's gotta seem like it's gonna make some difference.
It's more driveway, probably wasn't there many, many years ago, huh?
That was put in twenty-five years ago. And then the trailer's ten or twelve years old, there was never any driveway there.
I have something that I wanna mention too, but man, in a minute, I just, is there anything else for Seth that you guys wanna cover?
Really like to know that, price of gravel.
Gravel number.
Yeah, that's, that's, that probably is a bigger number than the reclamer.
We're spending so much effort up there to make that right, if we're gonna reclaim, I want, I myself would like to see that four inches of gravel.
You wanna do the whole thing?
You're saying.
Where it needs it.
Well, you're saying you ditched the whole, you ditched all that. You're not seeing any gravel to speak of.
Not the ditch, no.
Well, then the whole thing.
Right in town, yeah, going up over the hill, there was some gravel on, on the right side when I was digging, that was all pretty decent.
Well, my other concern is too, is where there's, with that road particular, and there hasn't been any ditching. Opinion, hundred percent, but that road has stayed fairly good even without gravel because there's no ditch for it to push into. Now that we have ditching, I'm afraid if we don't add gravel, that we are gonna create. So, but if we can prolong it by adding four inches of gravel, I think it's a.
No, this is the time, you know, if you can add a few thousand dollars and turn that into a twenty-year road instead of a twelve-year road. That's well worth doing.
Not, we're gonna be up so high, for what I'm concerned, about be seven inches higher than it is, well. Just can't say it's gonna happen cuz it ain't. Your road's gonna get narrower if you have your slopes.
But if we go to twenty feet, we're fine.
I'm just saying that might help on that side there with that, on the high side.
I'm not, I think it's the best thing to do. We got too much effort involved in not making it right. And I mean, I wouldn't wanna put a road count around in front of Phil or Rick's house or guess how many cars go on that road.
I would say, I have never spent any time on that road, but recently, cuz we were up there looking around, I could not believe the traffic on that road. And that's as bad as it is, we can fix it.
I wanna speed bump halfway up.
Yeah, it is gonna be.
So you gotta tell me, or just ahead of the grinder, or what do you do?
You can if you want, we usually just lay it up first and then they come and do that thing and we're done, you know what I mean?
So then, we're gonna have a grader and put this material in.
Most of them have that all figured right in.
But with Roundy, if we go with Roundy's, we need the grader, your grader.
She said it would save money, but I don't think she understands that it's my grader enough. So it might not save a lot of money.
No, but it's, we're not gonna buy a grader.
Well, the only thing too to make sure everybody remembers is we are adding cost to a project that's already underfunded. So, we are gonna have to ask more money to pay.
It's entirely possible that we end up rolling this thing and we don't pave it till it's next year. I, I don't wanna do that, but if we don't get the money we need, that's what will happen.
We have the money and we very easily should be able to get it to finish the project.
I anticipate.
We sold between selling a truck this year and, and a piece of property, I mean, that's on top of what was already there that. You know what I mean, so, there's definitely adequate funding available to do this. But I have had, I've heard, I got two calls today of people that are not in favor of it because, because there's so many areas that need to be done. And didn't think that spending more money on a road is a good idea, and I just let them know that. Until this project is done, we can't get to another road. So whether or not we fund it this year and get it done, or we wait and fund it next year, that is still gonna get done before we go to this one. So, I, and we want to get all these roads done, but until we can get this done, we're not going here anyway. So.
It's just gonna prolong.
Sure, if everybody wants to stretch it out two more years instead of. That's fine, you know, that's everybody's choice, but.
That's very expensive, that amount of hot top. How much would, nobody told you if you did like you said with the hot top, how much it would cost?
There's no difference between reclaim price to shim and paid price. Both estimates are equally.
In terms of asphalt.
Asphalt price is no different.
But your biggest upgrade is gonna be the gravel.
No, I, I mean, how much it's gonna cost if you put the amount of gravel, uh, hot top on that each set?
The same as if we shim it.
Same price, which was, do you know what that number was?
I don't have, I don't have my sheet.
It's almost two hundred grand.
Do you mean shimming it with paved hot top?
So we don't have any prices?
Yeah, I just don't have it in front of me, boss. I got, we had it last meeting, last week.
And we haven't approved, we haven't approved anything yet.
We ain't got no, but you've got some prices.
And we've talked about it, we just, I don't have.
There's like a hundred, there's Roundy's.
Yeah, here's an example of one, uh.
There's his reclaim, so that's the, but it's equal, so it's two hundred thousand.
Yeah, you gotta take out the showers mill, yeah, it's two hundred grand. Figure two hundred grand. And, and maybe.
You said the gravel's gonna be, it's gonna be grounding, it's gonna be out of that?
The gravel will be ground in and laid down and then we'll lay hot top over the top of that.
But I mean, the price.
No.
Is that gonna give you for grinding?
That's why we're asking him to get us a price for gravel.
So we gotta, and how much gravel do you think?
Well, that's what we haven't figured out yet.
We're not gonna know that tonight.
My homework today and I didn't get it done.
Well, we're gonna be three inches, you're thinking. And how far is that?
One, one point one seven miles.
One point seven. They said one point seven. It's almost, yeah, it's gotta be, it's two hundred thousand, it's gotta be two, almost two miles.
Yes, it's pretty good, um.
Pretty easy math, about a hundred a mile, so.
Yeah, the gravel will probably be four feet, six feet.
Hold on, you get the numbers for us and we'll have it, we'll be, we'll be able to figure it out. That's me, that's.
Uh, so, uh, we, it's entirely possible that we may have another meeting next week on this, because if you've got numbers for us.
I think we're gonna have an, it would be your regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, so we got one anyway, yeah.
So I think you ought to have it and have one the third week.
Cuz we need to get this warrant set up, once we know.
You have to have it posted seven days, you have to.
Okay, so that's.
I have approved a special warrant, but I didn't get any numbers, so we're obviously not going to.
Yeah, I, if you, if we've got numbers on Friday, we could have a meeting on Friday and start the clock ticking.
Yeah, I can have your numbers in just an hour or so.
So, the only, the only other thing that we need is to, to add to your homework list is write around what your thoughts is for next year.
Well, I did some of that today.
All right, cuz that's why, I mean, we know we're gonna need X amount more money to finish this project. But we also need X amount of money to get culverts ready for next year's project. So, and we can do that on the warrant that way.
That's the way it really should be done.
One is to finish the McFeeters and this is to blahdy blahdy blah for X, Y, Z roads for next year.
I got a lot of them.
And doing this is no different than what we, what we did last year, I mean. It's, the money's there, so it's not like it's.
It's really added tax burden. It's more of a, it's more of a challenge, the time. Summer's so short and everybody gets booked, we're in a, I mean, I read every day that there are little municipalities. Floating bonds to pave, we're in a good position, we're not close to having to do anything like that. We just gotta get coordinated and. Have the weather help us.
So we actually don't know firm figure.
We do not know a firm figure yet, that's why we're not gonna make any motions tonight. Okay, but if we have numbers on Friday, if it looks like you got numbers for, for this, and if we're gonna do East Sagaville ditching and. Culverts, if we can get all that together for Friday, we can meet and get the ball rolling so we can start the clock on the town meeting.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that.
Yeah, it's up to you, I don't know if you guys are available.
I will make available, so we can.
I'm not gonna be here, I'm leaving for New York tonight.
Okay.
Speaker phone, conference call?
If it happens.
I understand, but.
Wouldn't you be back Monday?
I'm driving back Monday. Monday or Tuesday, I usually control a little of night.
Let's see what we got, see where we stand.
But if you, if you even a conference call, I would be. Just like, even though if you're not here, technically he can't vote to have you a part of the conversation to get your opinion to be.
Technically he can vote, but they say having an opinion is.
It's good, that's good.
Makes me feel better having all three of us's opinions when we're doing stuff.
Well, particularly cuz, uh, we've got, we're gonna end up having to make a motion to have a town meeting.
Right, right.
But that, maybe one or two days doesn't matter, I mean, whether we do it Friday night or Tuesday night, I. I don't know. I'm just trying to get Roundy in the queue, that's really. I mean, I suppose we could put Roundy in the, but see, we can't even, we gotta have the meeting before the eighth. So we, yeah.
Well, technically, if you wanted them to start on the eighth or ninth, you'd have to sign a warrant tonight, like, I'd have to post it. Or somebody would have to post it and.
We don't have enough information, I mean, I, you could, you could put it in the queue and then cancel it, but that gets horny. All right, we'll, we'll do the best we can do. All right, uh, with regard to this project, if, if anybody wants to, I know that all of you, some, some of you had some things you wanted to talk about with this project, so. Mr. Mark?
Yes, I just wanna mention one thing before I complain. You guys have done so far a beautiful job on, on the road. And this fellow here's been very nice to work with and talk with and everything and. And I think the relationship will continue, I hope. And, but my only concern is, you guys took out the trees on our lawn. And put it into a ditch. When we have, um, a lot of company at the house, we usually park our vehicles on the lawn. Now that the ditching is there, we can no longer do that. Um, my question is, can you put in a culvert for me? So I can still put vehicles on the lawn? Because right now, my driveway, if I have another vehicle, there's no room on the side of the road to park. And we'd like to have that, um, that area done, so that way the vehicles. Instead of being in the road and couldn't have a chance getting hit, to be put on my lawn instead.
Yep, I usually.
Now, he gave me a cost, an estimated cost.
I'm just gonna tell you.
How much it would, in ballpark, how much it would be. And I, and I can't afford that, so that's why I'm here talking with you tonight, to see if you'd be willing to do that for me. So that I can, instead of have vehicles in the road, have it on my lawn instead.
Can't you drive from your driveway up onto your lawn, from your driveway up onto your lawn?
Not, not really because of the bank, not really because of the bank.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think that with regard to the municipality, we are only responsible for cul, the culverts. In the driveways. And that is our only responsibility and our, I mean.
It's really our only jurisdiction. And I, I, I think of, cuz I go through Dexter all the time. All of the inconveniences that people are, had to endure on Spring Street. Whether you were Toots Delicatessen, you now have a curb where I, we always parked. Dex Variety, same thing, they, they didn't have any choice, they, they put a curb right within two paces of his front door. Route seven, same thing, the state redid that road, they put curbing in where there never was. You used to be able to just pull off on your lawn and you could drag your camper up there, you're not doing that anymore, your Honda Civic is not going on your lawn anymore. And they didn't put, you know, they, everybody's driveway was treated like a driveway, but they didn't, you know, they didn't. Uh, the same thing could be said for the, for somebody further up who says, I used to hay that field. Or I, I would put my camper in that field, I wanna culvert where there wasn't one. I just, my concern is it wouldn't end, or, or might not end.
Right, you can't do for one, you can't do for everybody.
We do have to do everybody's driveway.
Access to people's land, you guys have changed the access to people's land by ditching.
Correct, and it happens every day.
Give people access to their land from the road, so road frontage doesn't really matter anymore because they can't get to their land from the road anymore. So you've devalued their property, so that should be reflected in his taxes, I would say.
That doesn't devalue his property.
It does devalue your property, you can't access it from the road, if you've got five hundred feet of road frontage, it's valuable.
Actually, just, not, not that it's an, an exact, uh, example, but we abandoned a road. A, a long piece of road, and we had an assessor come in because the town is responsible for paying the landowner. The loss in value, so in this case, this property was on a townway and now it's no longer on a townway. The road is gone in terms of maintenance.
So they lost value.
You would, well, guess what the, the amount was?
I don't know.
Zero.
Why?
That's what the assessor.
Cause they didn't appreciate the value.
Didn't change the value of their property, according to the assessor.
But it totally did, we all know that it did.
It's opinion.
Well, it's, that's a matter of opinion, I think a ditch that properly takes the water down the road and not onto his driveway into his basement, which you said your basement used to fail, is an improvement that we did for him.
So it's a watch.
So, um, and.
Let's hope not.
Yeah, let's hope it's not, but it does, those exams, I gave a few examples that happened every day.
That's right.
And.
That's right.
Did you want your tree cut down, was that your choice, or was that the town's choice?
That was the town's choice.
They told me you wanted it cut down, interesting.
They did, they needed it cut down, and I said, go ahead, I said, go ahead.
They told me that you wanted that tree cut down, because you were afraid that it was gonna fall on your house, that's what I was told.
Who told you?
Interesting.
Who told you that?
The man that was doing the work on the road.
He's right there.
No, it wasn't you, it was an older man, it was an older man, and I was upset, because the tree was so beautiful, and it took away the character of the area.
Well, that's, that's not the town telling you that.
Was the man in charge of the project, your boss?
No, 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 he's a professional.
No, no, no.
Yeah, that was just a tree guy.
The, the man that was cutting the trees down told me he wanted to cut the tree down.
That's irrelevant.
He just misspoke.
Was it the town that wanted the tree cut down?
Yes.
Yes.
The tree was in the right of way.
Down right of way.
And then the town's right of way. And.
Okay, let me ask you this.
I just wanted to get to the truth, that's all.
If she not willing to put in a culvert, could we go out and have one on expense?
Nope.
Did you pay him for the wood in that tree, where'd the wood go? That was good.
It's actually, actually, every ant landlord got the option to keep the wood.
I didn't want the wood, I couldn't burn it anyway.
Okay, well, it is valuable, I'm just saying.
But, uh, okay, would you be willing to put in a culvert if I made monthly payments to you guys?
That would be an arrangement with Seth.
It would be with him, or a contractor, but it, it has to go, the road commission has to approve the job, uh, and it has to be done to a certain spec. And that's, but we just, in fact, there's a gentleman who's constructing, I think it's gonna be a business, a restaurant, or, he just went through this, he had to pay to put a culvert in, and. And if he, oddly enough, if he had put his driveway in before we ditched, we would have been giving him a culvert, because that's what we're doing with everybody who has a driveway.
Legitimate and actual, your driveway, your access point, if there wasn't a.
But beyond that, anybody can put in a culvert, they're just gonna have to, and normally, you have to pay for them anyway, the first one. And then the towns are always responsible after that.
So what you're saying, I'll have to get with him?
Or any other contractor.
Contractor, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Seth, there's, Seth will provide him with the specifications, because it has to be a certain size culvert and all of that. Once, if it's done proper, as long as it's done properly, after you've done it once, the town's responsible forever.
So you're not like, you're not gonna put in any, uh, say, they sell a good one in somewhere, and there's still life left in it? You can't put it in his driveway, or is that?
That's just a whole new, another, that's totally different issue, if, if you had a perfectly good culvert, we could use it wherever we wanted to use it.
Correct.
Yeah. But that's.
At some, at some point, we're gonna have, there's gonna be one here and there that's still in good shape.
They would go back into a driveway that has an existing culvert, yes.
Or he could sell it to, if, if, if Seth has some culverts that belong to him, that's, or any contractor for that matter. But we're basically tasked with making sure that the taxpayer's money is spent in a responsible way, that's, that's really.
But you could give it to him, or could you?
No.
No.
Oh, I can't.
No.
We can't give them.
We can't give away town property.
And we don't sell anybody a used culvert. Because once that culvert is put in, that is the town's property going forward.
Right, so then.
So it's in the town, in the best interest of the town, when a culvert goes in, it needs to be the right size, the right spec, good culvert, and done properly. Because you and I, or all of us in our tax bill, twenty, fifteen, whatever years from now, we have to pay to replace that.
So it's gotta, if he puts one in, it's gotta be the spec.
Correct, correct.
Same as anybody else that, you know, I mean, you own wood lots, if you wanna put a driveway into one of them, it's no different, you would get a hole of sap, and we gotta, there's a form, and he's gotta look at it and fill it out, and it's gotta be put in properly.
Because if you put in a substandard one, and it fails, then we're gonna be out there fixing it.
At the taxpayer's expense.
Right. So that's, that's why it's done that way. And all of this is around protecting the taxpayer's investment in this road. That's why you have ditching, that's why sometimes we cut trees that are still very healthy, because we're trying to protect the investment of the road.
You cut the tree to protect the road?
Correct.
I do a lot of that on that hill road, that's a lot of trees.
Well, there's a little thing called global warming, and here's the hat, but, you know, whatever, cut all the trees and expose all the hot pavement, that's cool, it's weird.
Indeed.
I have the same request as Phil, however, there used to be a driveway on my side, on, between my house and Clue's house, there was a driveway. I park a fifth wheel there, so by putting the ditch in, I have no place to put a fifth wheel. I can't get around through my front yard or my backyard, I've always been storing it between the houses. But years ago, there was a driveway there, and it just grassed over.
Well, there was no culvert.
But there was no.
There were no culverts.
Right.
But it was still just like my driveway, there's no culverts on my driveway.
Right.
And again, I've been using that, and now you changed my access.
Right.
Yeah, he's grandfather, that's it.
I can't, you know, there was a driveway there, so my grandfather.
Yeah, I'd say so.
Well, how many driveways does each resident get, I mean, many that are in there, if you can access.
Well, you're honestly.
Are you saying only one?
No, actually Kevin has two.
Kevin, well, yeah, Kevin, but the only thing is, go up there. Let's, if we put many more culverts in there, what was the point of putting the ditch?
To pump up on the ditch, that's already covered.
I mean, because, I don't, I didn't, I mean, I have an idea where you're talking about, but.
Yeah, it's just between my, that big tree and.
Sure, so you're talking twenty feet off your cul, off Kevin's culvert?
Yeah, whatever, whatever works best then.
And then there'd be twenty feet in between that culvert to get to your driveway.
There's a hundred and twenty feet from.
Yeah, thirty feet to a culvert.
Right.
So you're up to sixty, you gotta have a hundred and twenty split in half, that's thirty aside.
Yeah, but when, you know, again, I've been using it for years. I did not know there was being ditching down there.
Mm-hmm, I didn't know there were trees in there.
And then now all of a sudden, it's like, oh crap, he's ditching, and I immediately called Brady, immediately, and told him my concern. And, and, and I'm looking at it several different ways, I understand your thinking, but if you had property in the country, as an example, and you had quite a bit of frontages, as an example, you were able to maintain your house lot, and then you went down the road, because there was a wet spot or whatever, you couldn't get through, and then you went down, maybe you're just bush hogging a trail or something like that. You only did it once or twice a year, so you didn't have a road there, but you accessed it all the time, and then the town came and ditched everything, now you lost your access. So the town's not responsible for giving you access where you've always used it?
Well, you, there's nothing blocking you from putting a culvert in.
No, but I don't see why I have to, because the town changed my property, and this is what I've been doing.
Well, and I, I, you know, I, I think what I'd like to do is I'm gonna get some clarification from many municipalities.
That's what I was gonna ask you to do, if you could get a clarification.
Because I, I'm just, the only anecdotal evidence I, is what I shared with you.
Cause I don't want everybody to share any access, because not everybody, um, you have a trouble with your, your lot, because you can't get to it from the backside.
Right.
My lot?
Yeah.
What do you, yeah.
Well, if, can you get to it from the backside?
Sure.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Wasn't sure, cause it used to be quite a hump there, so if you're trying to bring a tractor with a bush hog, I didn't know if you could get over it, but if they.
But if, if she wanted to make that argument, she could.
Yeah.
She could say, hey, that's how I bush hog, I wanna, I wanna a culvert.
Exactly. Right.
And just like Dexter Variety could say, hey, that's where our parking is, we don't wanna curb there, and the state said, well, guess what?
Too bad.
The state has certain rules and regulations that they have to do, so I'm aware of that stuff.
Well, I think we're in the same situation, because I think that's what Seth really needs to look at, because, you know, for the integrity of the road, that's why the trees were removed, and that's why we've ditched it.
Right.
And looking at the road, because you had these set driveways in place, you ditch it, so you get the water flow, now you start adding culvert and a culvert, in all of these spots, I don't see how you, we improve the integrity of the road in.
But I lost, you know, now I gotta go hire somewhere to, to store something that I've never had to hire before.
I fully understand that, but that doesn't.
And you changed it, not me.
Correct, so if we go down to Toots and Dexter, I'm sure Toots and Dexter has lost a substantial amount of money because of the way they've done that, and Toots had no say in that.
It has nothing to do with it.
And I see this as a similar, I mean, MMA can tell us this, but.
Right, yeah, that's exactly what we need, is MMA.
The question is, do we have the authority to spend money on convenience culverts?
Correct.
That's the question, and if we do, we'll consider it, but we, it may be that we don't even have the authority to do it.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
For example, as, as you know, I mean, you've been, you've done this, you can't spend money on a private way, you just can't do it, as much as you might like to, so, we'll, we'll, we'll get an opinion. And, and then we can give it proper consideration.
And that would be, I have to, or?
Culverts of convenience would include almost anybody who felt like they'd like to have access.
I have that one caveat, there used to be a driveway there, so I mean.
You are grandfather.
If I'd still had a driveway there, you'd have to put a culvert.
Not at.
No, if, if there was a driveway there, then based on the approach that we elected to do, you would be getting a culvert there.
Correct.
Right, but currently, there, there is not a driveway there.
Well, if there was a driveway there, Seth might have looked at it and said, okay, we won't ditch Kevin's, and we won't ditch between Kevin's and.
Maybe we start here, right.
Might change the whole thought process of what you do there.
Right, but I wasn't aware any ditching was, and I tried to get what was happening, and I never knew right up until it was being ditched.
Before we started, you asked all the landowners if they wanted their ditching material in the wood, right?
I couldn't tell him how much material, but.
But you, you asked.
I asked what was gonna happen, and she was not sure, she did not.
Correct, and she asked if you wanted any ditching.
She's, I said, are you ditching, and she said, I don't know.
I said, I'm ditching the road, I don't know where the ditch is gonna start.
But it wouldn't matter, honestly, it wouldn't matter.
Correct.
If, if the ditching isn't done.
And his ditching in front of you, if you want more material.
The ditching is done because we believe it needs to be done, it's not done, we, oh gee, we, okay, we won't ditch, because you don't want us to, that's not how it works. So it wouldn't matter, she did try to inform everybody, so that they weren't.
But, but I did ask, and actually, I, I, finding out all of Seth, and I asked what he was gonna do, when he said he had to look at it, I never got any answers back, and when I asked, I still didn't get anything. So I never knew what was happening right up until they were at my driveway.
Right.
And that's when I called, you know, so I did everything I've thought in my power to try to find out what was happening, and then.
I guess, but the point I tried to, is it wouldn't make any difference.
Well, it might have.
I mean, we, we didn't ditch it arbitrarily, is what I'm saying, we just did because.
But there may have been another angle to look at at the time, that's all.
Things to consider, upsetting people that.
Talked it out or something, then there might have been something that we did it on, I don't know now, but, that's my point, but MMA is perfect.
Yeah, I'll just talk to them and see what leeway we have in their opinion.
Yeah. But I'd like to see how it's, are you writing an email, or you're talking?
I'll write, we'll, we'll do this one in writing.
Because it's so critical on how you word things to MMA.
Well, sometimes, I mean, if you ask them, can I spend money on a private way that's, kind of dried, you can't do that, but, but culvert of convenience, I'll ask them, or Brady will ask them.
So you, so you probably know by, by next meeting then?
We'll probably know tomorrow afternoon what their opinion is, now, they may direct us to our council, which Brady has the authority to do, so, but that shouldn't be terribly expensive.
No, it should be a quick.
Um, yeah, what, fifteen minutes, so, there's a hundred dollars. But yeah, we'll, we'll get an answer as to what authority we have with this sort of thing, but you can see from our point what could happen.
I know, and it.
Yeah.
On the other side of it, Seth, you need to look at it, and look at both of these areas, and see if, with what we're trying to do, is that appropriate to add more culverts now? Whether or not we can fund them or not, if it's gonna not do what we want it to do, then you can't approve it.
Ain't gonna hurt nothing to put them in there.
This water still flow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
MMA's gonna tell you, if there was no culvert there, then the landlord pays, period, that's what they're gonna tell you.
No, I, I believe even, even the existing driveway, I don't think we were required to do it, I think that is a courtesy.
Absolutely.
Yeah. That's why all those fields on Route seven, nobody's got a road over the curb, no, those curbs are there, and you can't drive your Civic on your lawn anymore, and.
Would it not have been cheaper if they know the driveway, the other one was gonna be gone, that you could have the ground tractor, put the culvert in at the time they were doing the ditching?
He's still there.
They would save them a lot of money.
He's still there, nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed.
It's not changing.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll see what we.
Just have the guy answer the phone and tell him what.
What the lay of the land is, Tom. Moving on, new business, approve a warrant for special town meeting that I think we're gonna table.
Do you wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to table, um, item six, new business, A, approve warrant for special town meeting.
Okay, in the favor, we are tabled, three, um, selling of the American Legion building. Can you help us with that?
I'll give you a little insight into that, the, the Masons decided to sell their building.
Yep, I heard that.
The American Legion, we're so old now, in age, it's hard getting up and down the stairs, we only have four or five people filling up, we don't even have a corner. We decided to fold it up, and in our charter, people were gonna go to different posts throughout the area. And we decided, well, maybe we could, uh, put it on the market, and we tried to talk the guy into buying both pieces of property. He would have owned that whole corner thing with two buildings, and ours is in fairly decent shape compared to the, uh, the Sonic building. Well, he backed out of the deal, because in the process of buying the Sonic building, there was quite a problem, there are three separate deeds for that piece of property. And one of them pops right up to the American Legion building, there's only two foot around that building. So it's kind of landlocked, basically, can't sell if there's, there's no property there. There's a right away between those two buildings, and it's only sixteen. And it's enough that you could drive up in there and unload a car or something, but there's no parking here, the guy had dropped the other building, he's not allowed, so. Here we are, we're stuck with a building that we can't sell. So, the top officers of the Legion, we tried to put it on the market anyway, it's gonna be a hard sale, but they decided they would be willing to give the building. Now, this was at the meeting with Brady, the other two wanted to give it to the town. Now, I'm one of the officers, and I'm opposed to that, because we went through this with Abby Fowler. I don't think we need to take on another building like that, and I'm sure this one's gonna have everything from lead paint to who knows what asbestos and.
So does, does the lodge own all around that then, is that what you were saying by all these deeds?
Yes.
No, they only bought up to it on that right away.
So who else owns beside?
Town.
Well.
That's on the corner though, in the back.
You own what, like, two feet around the building, they own like two feet around their building.
Now, the town owns up to the monument there, in that side of the lawn. And I think from that arcing lot down on twenty-three, up to within two feet of the Legion, I think the town owns that too.
I'd have to verify it, but I think.
Yeah, probably does.
I think so, yes, I believe.
But anyway, I, this was just talk, the three of us came out, and we sat down with Brady one day, and they sprung his about giving it away.
You can, I bet you can't even give it away, cause you have to pay taxes on it, right, you have a building with zero value, and you're paying, what?
We're, we're nonprofit.
Oh, so you don't pay property taxes, okay, so you're good on that one.
But still, we, we gotta cover insurance.
It's expensive to own a building.
I mean, there's a sewer bill there.
Exactly.
That's there, because it runs by the building.
You have the privilege of possibly using it.
Right, well, we paid for the monument.
Yes.
We paid sewer bill for the monument.
Yes, the town pays the sewer bill on the monument lot, that is true.
I pay a sewer bill, I don't have any buildings online.
We've done this for years.
That's right.
But it doesn't come to, that money isn't going to the town.
Correct, there's nothing to do with the town.
No, sewer bill is, yeah, separate.
So, what, why wouldn't they just consider selling it for like, just next to nothing, why wouldn't they sell it for a thousand dollars? As opposed to giving it away?
Well, that's, that's the thing, I was hoping that Ed and Brad would be here tonight.
They're both packing to go on vacation.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like something we can meet about later, I guess.
I mean, this is nothing that has to be done.
Your concern is, for me personally, is very similar, I would have the same concerns that you have, so I, I, we actually can't, I don't even think we could take that building. On our authority, we have to go to the town and say, can we take this gift, believe it or not, so I, I, I imagine structuring the warrant in such a way that. Can we take this gift and sell it? So that.
For any amount, any necessary.
Any amount we want, so, in other words, we.
You don't wanna sell it for a thousand, but I would, because I wanted to draw a tax revenue and not deal with the issues.
Yeah, five hundred dollars is fine with me, because now it belongs to somebody, and they're gonna pay property tax, and they can do whatever they want with the building.
Problem is, there's no, no property around the building.
There's a, there's a public parking lot at the bottom of the hill, then anybody's allowed to access.
And you'd have to walk up, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, but you, it's been, you know.
But that billing, I would assume it has some value, it may only be a thousand dollars, but.
Oh, right.
It probably has some value, so we probably could sell it, and you probably could too.
Correct.
Well, we've got it on the market right now, we've.
What, twenty-nine, right?
I think the reasoning was that we're going to get the money whether you sell it or we sell it.
A portion of that, those assets would come to the town, is that how that works, when you dissolve?
It goes between the town and the church.
Okay.
But this is your asset, so can't you as a nonprofit?
No, because the way that trust fund is set up.
Okay.
Of which I haven't seen.
Do you know who the trust, who, who's running the trust these days, I mean, what institution?
I don't know who is running it.
That was one of my questions.
Because, uh, well, Ed had that with him that day.
Well, yeah, but it says that, um.
What happens when?
A bank, the bank that was in town at that point was administrating it, but they're no longer in town, so gotta do some research. To figure out, um.
But right now, we have a trust fund that.
Northeast.
We will end up turning that over after we get rid of that building. The town gets forty percent of that trust, the church gets sixty percent of that. Now, the town's set, bit of that was what, Brady, a thousand every three months?
That's what Ed told me, yes.
That's what the town's gonna be getting regardless of what we do with it, whether you guys take it or.
So we, we're gonna receive a payment from the trust, not a lump sum distribution.
But it's gonna be a continuous payment.
Interesting.
Yeah, and the church gets sixty percent of that total amount.
I, well, I think if, if you had a quorum of representatives, we could probably start the conversation, but.
Right, that's, that's why, like I said, I probably wish that they had been here, but Pam and I were both on the Abby Fowler committee for years. We went through that from, from the start, I don't wanna go through that.
No, I think, I think we could structure it in a way that's.
Yeah, like Mike said, if we put that as a warrant article, would you accept the gift of the Legion building, and allow.
Yeah, us to sell.
Allow us to sell it, this will not be a conversation, because.
There won't be any.
It's the only way, you, because you can't, you can't, you couldn't modify that article in a way that would create a greater incumbents upon the town.
Right.
So I, we could, I think we could write it in such a way that if we take it, the select one has the authority to sell it for any amount of money they want.
Well, and it'd be easier to sell for actually, because the town would own the property around it, which.
But it doesn't change, well, no, because it's not gonna change anything, it's not going with it.
The only person that would really wanna buy that property is the man that already bought the, the lodge, because I don't know, it has.
Well, the person sitting right beside you.
I'll write a check for a thousand bucks right now.
There you go.
There you go.
See, there is a number, I can tell you, there's a number.
I mean, if you're really, these guys are saying they'll dump it off for nothing. I can write a check for a thousand right now.
Anybody can pay clause?
I don't know, I would, I would sell before.
All we're gonna do.
No, I don't have the authority, but.
All we're gonna do is run an ad in the paper with some ridiculously low minimum, and take bids on it, and sell.
My only question, though, if it needs remediation.
I don't know if we want it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, no, we, we, before we took it, we wanna know what.
Yeah, because I mean.
If there's asbestos in it, we don't wanna touch it.
Right, because then the seller is responsible, so, so.
It would be much better if, if there's a potential that the current owners that can make a decision of that building may talk to somebody very close and see if you guys can arrange something, and it may be the best interest of everybody.
I know Ed's going to.
Without a doubt.
I know Ed's going to Massachusetts, and I don't know where Brad's.
Florida, he's gone for a week, and Ed's gone.
Okay, so it'll be a week or two before I can get back with them, but.
We don't wanna commission on this either.
Yeah, right, exactly.
We might conduct and scare this whole thing.
See, we had this worked out, that he was going to buy it, but when he realized that we couldn't sell it because there was no land. Then he says, ah, I don't think I wanna spend that money on that.
Oh, that was a wrong decision, because he could have explained.
But it's no different than what that guy, I don't know what the deal was, but if you reached out to him for half of what he offered you before.
Yeah.
You still.
Exactly, I mean, he, what was he originally intending to pay, what was he, what was?
Eight thousand, eight thousand.
Yeah, I think it was eight thousand.
So if you went back to him for four, what's he gonna say, he might say pass, but.
He should, it would be.
Your best option may be besides.
It would make his Mason building a lot more.
I think the taxes are weird.
I think, I got a feeling you can sell this for more than free.
Yeah, yeah.
They will bring, they will all come down and.
Uh, item seven, are we done with this?
I think so.
Yeah.
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 Uh, item seven, abatements and supplements.
All right, you had A last time, and we tabled in order for Josh to come in and say to you.
Sorry, Josh, I did not.
So if you wanna read it, and then he, I'm sure he'll.
Uh, abatement of six hundred and sixty-four dollars and six cents in twenty nineteen property tax on map twenty-three, lot thirteen as requested by Josh Moore, assessor, agent, because the house has been gutted and is now unlivable. Which is not reportable, and was not reported until after tax bills went out.
Was unlivable before that as well?
I guess the only reason we dragged our feet on this, Josh, is that last line where it says it wasn't reported until after. It was reported this year, it wasn't reported last year.
Right, it was a different owner last year, um, April, I believe they took it back from a previous owner. It was, uh, been sold a couple times by the same owner. Lovely property, I believe it was, and they just never took care of it. Uh, but they never complained about the taxes, they paid it, it was fine, and they had it for sale for quite a bit more money when they first sold it. So, we left the value as it was, and nobody ever asked us to come in and look at it. Normally, when somebody buys a property like that, you know, if you know it's that bad a condition, call your assessor, call your town, give appointments with them, look at it. Uh, April first is the cutoff date, I was there after April first, uh, Ms. Doyle had called and asked, uh, us to come down and take a look at it. Uh, Shannon and Cory, my employees, went down, took a look at it, you know, they said it, it's unlivable, no bathroom, no hookup.
You have plenty.
She did pay twenty-five thousand dollars for it. My opinion was, we'll drop the value once she fixes it up, we'll bring it back up. Like I said, I did not see it before April first, I feel like it probably was not livable on April first also, that's why I wrote up the abatement and intended into. I still think it has some value, I mean, it must have, she paid twenty-five thousand for it, so it's gonna have some sort of value, I don't wanna take the value right off.
Going with that value.
But that's why we wrote up the abatement, and I'd like to, I'd like to have these people call, but nobody ever does until they get the tax bill.
So when did you purchase the property?
January. And you knew it was unlivable in January? Correct.
You also knew what the tax bill was in January.
I paid the taxes, yes.
Correct, you would have paid your portion of the tax bill from January to.
Yeah, it was only like two bucks or something, like it was, like, the taxes had been paid basically through when I purchased it, so. To be honest, there's a lot going on there, and I didn't even think of it until I got my tax bill, and I went, oh, I need to talk to them about the value of the house, because it's. I didn't pay anywhere near what they, you guys have it valued at, so that's what, you know, got me thinking. I don't know how you value property, except based on what it sells for, that makes sense to me. Is that correct, Josh?
What you did?
Go ahead, restate. Um, I said, I don't know how the town values a piece of property in general, except for when it sells. You know, when someone purchases a property, then that would be what it would be worth, you know what I mean?
Only do a townwide average, I can't go out and say, this person paid this much, this is what we're gonna tax it for.
Right.
Legally, legally, we have to do a townwide average, it's called mass appraisals, we're not, an appraisal company like a bank will hire. You know, if you hired a bank appraisal, that you pay them eight hundred dollars, come up, they put a value on the house. We have to do a mass appraisal, average it out, what people are paying for the property, and come up with an average price throughout the town. Which gets you a state valuation, you have a state guy that comes in every year, looks at your sales, sees what's assessed at, and then they put the town at a value. So my license is a certified mass appraiser.
Certified mass appraiser.
If the town hired a regular.
What?
No, that's what it is, if the town hired a regular appraiser to do every building like a, like a bank appraiser, their taxes would be ridiculous. Because then you could have to pay, like I said, eight hundred bucks per house.
To have the praise every year, I'm just saying that when I have, when a property changes hands, that's when you know. And that doesn't happen every day, I, I would think that doesn't happen very often, when a property changes hands.
About a hundred deeds a year.
So it's a hundred, well, then you know what the value of all those properties are, right at that point.
You know what somebody paid for it that has no, you don't know that's what the value.
If I did that, that would be illegal, the state of Maine calls that chasing sales, I can't just go out and look at a house because it's sold. I have to look at the town as a whole, and put all the sales together as a whole. I cannot just pick your properties that sell, value them to what they sell for, that sounds simple, I'd love to do that, but that's illegal. I would lose my license.
So you have the American Legion, I mean, did you factor in what he just told, I mean, to value a property, sometimes, I mean. It's an individual thing, I don't, I don't know about this mass valuation, it's, each property has an individual value.
That's how towns are done, the mass appraisals, they're not done by individual appraisals. Now, I say that, but you have the right as a property owner to call the town, or me, as an assessor. To come in and take a look at it, if I see something, like in your house, I saw, well, Jesus.
Unlivable, I was not allowed to vote in Sangerville because of my house, by the way, I'm not allowed to vote in the town. Even though I own the property, I'm not allowed to vote, I was told that.
Are you a resident?
Never heard of such a thing.
I own the property, I sleep in my car, I was not allowed to vote at the town meeting because I wasn't technically a resident. That's what I was told, I went to the town.
Driver's license say Sangerville?
Not yet.
Oh, well, if you're a resident, I don't think you actually have to own property if you're a resident.
Right, you have to be a resident.
Just gonna be a resident.
You could be renting, you know.
You could be renting?
Doesn't matter if you own property or not.
Yep.
But you have to have proof that you're a resident.
Yep.
That's right.
You have to have a registration, you have to have.
Light bill.
Something, I had my deed to the property. Yeah, but I mean, I own other properties in other towns.
Yes, nothing to do with the condition of your house.
But that was the only property I owned.
And land ownership, it doesn't have anything to do with land ownership.
So anyway, come back to, back to what we're talking about, my, this is my concern, my question.
What is your concern?
When these tax bills go out, and everybody knows what your tax bill was, whether or not you just, you bought the property six months ago. Or whether you had the property for six years, you, you know what your tax bill is.
Right.
And we all know when tax bills are coming out again, and.
Well, yeah, I'm a little off, I got a lot going on, but yeah.
So, for you, if I, meaning Josh, if, how, for you as a rep, how do you determine? We have a cutoff for a reason, you know, if I get my tax bill for say, and jeez, I don't like that. It would be very easy for me to call you and say, well, this was done before that, why, why is my tax bill for what it is? And you could come out and have to question, well, jeez, what work was done before April first, what work was done after April first? And that kinda puts you in a situation that may not be the best situation.
Correct.
I mean, we have these rules of a cutoff for a reason. And that's kinda my thing, it's nothing to do with your house, it's nothing to do with what's going on, we all know what that. We knew what, you knew what your tax bill was before, this is the process, and that's when the date is.
So you're saying that you won't change the tax amount on my house?
Well, you, you, you're changed for, for twenty nineteen.
Okay.
That's, that's done.
Okay, so.
The question is, can we retroactively go back and change your taxes for eighteen?
No, this is for nineteen.
Nineteen.
Oh, nineteen.
So eighteen is here, it's paid, and she knows, so now she's questioning.
It's not due until September.
Correct.
So I thought we had time.
We are talking about nineteen.
We are talking about nineteen, but it's assessed prior to April.
Correct.
Right, so what will hap, what, again, similar to the culprits, I think. Is, we could be in a position where someone else says, hey, uh, I, this, this wasn't noted. I, I had remodeled my living room, and it's all torn out, and they call Josh and say, we want an abatement. Because, well, Josh says to him, you would, you need to let me know that in April, or before April, that's why the cutoff is there. Otherwise, it doesn't end.
The cutoff of April first, tell me again, I'm sorry, I'm learning a lot, the cutoff, the cutoff is April first for what?
Two thousand nineteen tax.
Tax side doesn't mean it's April first, that's date Y, you assess the property of how it is on April first. The person.
It's sold in January, are you, are you made aware of the properties that sell, I mean, what motivates you to reassess the property? That's not my responsibility.
Actually.
It is, it is, to have the property reassessed.
Correct.
Sure.
I go look at.
Who put that amount, I didn't put that amount.
It was on that, where you bumped your property.
But if you wanna contest that amount, that is your responsibility.
Which is what I'm doing, before April first, and where does it say that? Where does it say that on any information I have ever received?
With the state law.
How am I supposed to know?
Inspire beware in Maine State, when you buy property.
Can you believe this?
No.
I can't either.
I've lived in the same place for twenty-two years, and I practically have paid the same amount of taxes. And I live in a double wide, and they say double wide depreciate.
So taxes should go down.
That's right, my taxes haven't gone down at all, I paid my taxes.
Actually, they went down this year.
Well, everybody's went down, so that's, I'm sorry, but that's.
Well, that's a good thing, though.
From what I can see, the property values in Sangerville are tanking, and that's just my observation since I've been here, the banks are closing, the, the American Legion's not worth anything.
Week, there's been four properties over three hundred thousand dollars in Sangerville that have gone under contract, so I would not think that property value.
But there really is very little correlation between the value of your property and the taxation on the part of the municipality. The taxation is what's required to run the town, so if, it doesn't matter whether a person lives in a double wide or in a castle. It's what it requires to run the town that dictates, there are people that live in beautiful homes in Harpswell, and the mill rate is a fraction of ours. Because what it costs to run the Harpswell, based on the number of people that live there, is a fraction of what it costs to run this town.
That's right.
So, the fact that a person lives in a double wide, and you're right, it probably hasn't appreciated much in market value, doesn't change.
It's the same today as what's been years ago.
Correct.
It goes by what property sells for, I see double wide for sale.
It goes by what the property sells for, okay, let's back to what I'm saying.
On a townwide average, I didn't think I had to repeat that.
Okay, on a townwide average.
Give you an example.
Value is going up all the time.
When a mill closes.
Know that, when would I know that, that's just, I have to know these things.
When you bought a piece of property with a tax bill, and you knew what it was, you knew the value on the, because you said you had to pay a portion of that. So when you bought the property, you knew.
I saw what it was taxed for, yes.
Okay, and that should have been a screaming red flag to you, you should have said, wow, this is a crazy amount of money. I think I wanna, I think I wanna call somebody and see if I can get this number changed.
I did, to do exactly that, I didn't know I was on a timeframe, I didn't know there was an April first cutoff. I would think, maybe you are aware of the tax amount and what I paid, and maybe you could notify. I would think, maybe you are aware of the tax amount and what I paid, and maybe you could notify your citizen. That's what I would think.
We did.
We did. We send them the tax bill every year. I am sure on your closing documents, it told you exactly what your tax bill was the previous year.
It didn't say I had till April first to contest it. That's state law.
Yeah, that's just state law.
Hmm. I didn't even know that myself.
So when I am moving into this town, with good intentions, any town, and I take a property that is condemnable, and I put my money into it to improve it, therefore increasing your tax base, you are not willing to help me. The town of Sangerville is gonna look the other way because I didn't meet my April first, how, how many days did I miss it? When did I call you? Do you have a record of that? I do.
Not written on me, but I do it like.
So, so there's no benefit for being a good citizen and taking care of a piece of property. There's no benefit to that. You could care less. You could care less that I'm helping improve a piece of property.
No, that's not what we're saying.
I don't see a correlation there.
There's no correlation.
There's no correlation.
The benefit to you is when you go to sell it, you're gonna be able to sell it for a lot more than you bought it for.
Maybe.
People flip houses every day. Some people make good investments, some people make bad, but it's nothing to do with the town.
The tax amount, the tax bill on that property is valued. You've got my building at fifty-two thousand one hundred ninety. You know I paid twenty-five. I don't see why you wouldn't notify someone buying property that they have until April first to contest the amount, like a red flag.
It's a state law.
It's a state law. In every town in the state of Maine.
It's a state law.
Yeah.
What is the law? Explain to me what the state law is.
He just told you what the law is.
The state law says that if you disagree with your tax amount, which I wouldn't even know what the tax amount is until April first, when I get my bill, right?
Well, you knew what it was last year, because you got that to close.
Close up, when you close.
When did, when did these go out? You don't know?
No, the, I just answered a different question. I said you do.
Taxes get mailed out?
End of June.
End of June.
It was either twenty, it was either twenty, twenty-nine.
So April, May, June, that would be after April. So I wouldn't even know what I was gonna be taxed this year.
Right.
Until after the cutoff.
This amount is less than what was on your tax bill from last year.
By how much?
Quarter mill.
But that had nothing to do with my personal property. That had to do with just.
No, the point is, you knew what the taxes were last year.
The point is, I didn't know what the taxes were this year, until after the cutoff date.
It's irrelevant.
No, it's not irrelevant, it's completely.
Let me give you another example.
I don't want another example.
Josh sometimes will ask us for an abatement because it's, it, it's an error that he made. He's our agent. And that's, and that is totally different. Uh, and we have accommodated those. I mean, things happen, you go.
Clerical.
This building was torn down, we should have noted it, and we didn't, and he comes to us and he tells us that, and, and we, almost one hundred percent of the time, obliged, we follow his lead. Uh, if, if he said to us, you've reported this last January, and it was his error that he didn't record it, then we would probably be granting this. But our hands are pretty much tied.
So I get my bill, and it's, I received the bill after the cutoff date, and I go to contest it in a timely fashion, and you're saying that I'm beyond the date because it's a state law? Is that what you're saying?
I believe years ago, April first.
I'm gonna call my attorney. What?
I believe years ago, April first, that people in town had a right to come in to the town office.
I didn't know about the building April first last year. Did I? I didn't own it until February.
But you own, you know in January.
I have paperwork.
You know what?
What?
I'll check with MMA.
Um, I'll check with my attorney too, and we'll talk.
Perfect. Yeah, you're welcome. Um, I guess that's it on that. Oh, we've got another one.
Do you want to table, table that, or we?
Yeah, we'll table that and check, check with MMA. I'm sure that Josh knows exactly what he's talking about, but I, I'm not questioning you at all. I'm just, just to be fair to her.
Thank you very much, Josh, for being here to facilitate our.
There is another abatement.
Yeah, yes.
Abatement of a twenty nineteen property tax on Matt Law, as requested by Josh Moran, Sessors Agent, because the town manager failed to notify him that the property had been foreclosed upon and sold. There's an example.
We owned it November thirtieth.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And we still owned it April first. And apparently nobody between November and I.
Right. That happens.
I understand.
Okay.
So this would be an example of where we would grant that, I suspect. Okay?
A second.
Those in favor?
Approved.
One thing I'd like to add, I don't know if this will help or not, but the way the law reads is the tax payer has a hundred eighty-five days after the commitment to ask for an abatement, if it's an error or something omitted on the tax bill. And I didn't, I don't feel that there was something omitted on her tax bill, and it wasn't an error that the town had made. So that's why I put, you know, I would notify after the April first date, so you know, it would be up to you guys, because you guys do have the final say.
Yeah, I just, for, I, we haven't even considered, but when you start backdating this stuff, I just, you're opening a can of worms.
Right, I think you're opening up to anybody. I mean, especially in a property that everybody drives by and knows, there's always work being done. Um, there's no, for me, there's no way to know what part was done when. Um, and like I said, I think it just puts you in a real bad situation, and that's why there is rules about this things and what you're supposed to follow.
And just do the rules.
If you don't follow the rules.
That's right.
This is where.
Yeah.
As we all know, things in the past. Upheaval. You did it for so-and-so, why won't you do it for me?
No, different than courtesy culprits. I mean, you got to do it the same way for everybody.
And it isn't just gonna be this house this week, or that road this week. It, you're setting a precedent.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Um, and I, I would be frustrated too, probably more with myself.
So we didn't, we didn't understand your role, didn't want you, this wasn't, for me anyway, it wasn't a negative anyway on your side. I just wanna make sure you knew that, so.
Okay, uh, on to, uh, are we ready to move on to item eight? Committee reports.
When we tabled it, what was the?
We tabled the, the, uh.
The first one.
The first one.
Item seven.
Approved.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
And I would think if, uh, another question for MMA would be, is, are we interpreting this statute correctly? Is the way that we're anticipating handling this the correct way?
Long as I've been here, I've never had that type of situation come back, where somebody's trying to backdate.
Well, the statute of rights that you don't have the power to.
I don't believe we do.
Do that.
No, I think you're getting into like putting money into a private road. You can't, you can't just do that.
I didn't read the one that Josh was talking about, but the one I read, because I was looking into poverty abatements, as you, you know, you can correct errors, but you, you can't.
Well, you can imagine, you get into all sort of this kind of buddy system where, oh, gee, you're, you did that for your friend, or your brother-in-law, and it's just, the date's the date, I think. We'll see. Uh, item eight, committee report.
Jason is here. I passed out the email. I sent it to you back.
Yep.
For today, twenty-one, twenty-fourth. Um, Jason, you're up.
So, you're in front.
Sure.
Sure.
Uh, let's see where to start. I think, if you recall, uh, I think it was on, um, March third, some of the committee members, before Pam officially joined the committee, uh, we came, we attended. Uh, we talked about various things, about the park, kind of what we wanted to do for this upcoming summer, and some of the concerns we had, blah, blah, blah. And that's where you guys kind of mentioned like the whole thing about building the road around it. And that's when it first came up. And, um, at that time, I think, um, our previous town manager found that in Greenville, there was a special, um, it was one of the Department of Natural Resources or one of the agencies. They were having a special thing on grants that could perhaps fit that shoe, that need, where they would maybe pay for some of the funding. So they were scheduled to go and attend the meeting with the other member of Jimmyville. And I think it was on a Friday, actually, maybe around the first of April. But for whatever reason, she did not attend it, kind of abruptly. It, um, so they did not attend, no, no other town official attended in her place. So basically, if you didn't attend that meeting, then you can't apply for the money through that grant. It was one of the, the requirements. Um, so we kind of missed out on the opportunity. But I think all of us kind of knew the road thing would be something, we would need a little more research, it wasn't something we could just snap our fingers and jump on that, but uh, we wanted to look at it. I believe, uh, Mark even mentioned maybe it could be a town warrant, the town would be interested in investing in the property perhaps, um, if we felt that it was needed. Um, but at that same meeting, if you go back and listen to the recording, there was different items brought up. Some of the things were, the playground back in October of the prior year, the playground equipment in the back was deemed by the insurance company to be a risk, and it was recommended that it be removed. We had also mentioned the swing on his report. There's this thing called safety zone, so it's a mathematical formula based on the distance of the chains and how far out, but, you know, when we all measured out, the fence was outside that safety zone. But it was required that they put wood chips underneath, right now underneath the swings, it's just, uh, grass. Um, but there were some other things in that report, I'm sure you guys have the report, but, um, so to this day, or at that meeting, I thought, you know, some of that stuff was gonna get done. Um, but no public works, I guess, makes it hardship on the town to get our contractor to come and do that stuff.
Contractor's available any day of the week.
What? We asked for that stuff. We've asked way back in the winter.
I started looking into it, I haven't.
Yeah, you just requisitions the town manager.
Correct.
And she, if, as long as the money's there, and she thinks it's reasonable, she can approve it.
And it comes out of the rec, it comes out of the rec budget, I mean.
And if something was questionable, if there's no, you know, if, she might bring it to us, but really, Bridie is the gatekeeper.
And that was, I know, before you joined, but I guess one of our issues the park committee is having is like getting faster response from town resources. You know, we ask for certain things, because the summertime is our busiest time. Probably eighty percent of our activity happens during the summer and early fall. So now we're at the, you know, end of August, or middle, you know, starting of August, and none of that stuff got done. And so for the committee, I think we're all.
When you say none of that stuff, Jason, you're talking about the wood chips?
The wood chips, removing the playgrounds, you know, that type of stuff.
Okay, so I remember that meeting, when we left the meeting, you was actually gonna, there was a conversation of it with Seth. And I believe Seth, the same day, went out, because you guys had him haul gravel in up there, and level up.
There was, when we tried to do the ice rink from back during prior December.
They plowed the gravel.
There was some, like washouts, basically.
They plowed the gravel.
So that took them three weeks to come after they were supposed to come. It took another three weeks from when it was asked. I think it was asked around like April fifteenth to have it done by, and it ended up being done like the first of May or something, three weeks later. So the response time is really, you know, we feel like, I feel like the rec area is a cust, we should be a customer of the public works, either be a contractor or not.
Public works.
Public works.
There is no public works.
Well, the contractor is public works.
No, he's not. There is no public works.
They're serving that capacity in the town.
No, they're a contractor, like any other.
We contract, we do not have a public works department.
So why do we allow the contractor not to do things on time when they're asked?
I don't know when the town manager asks to do that.
Yeah, it's, it's, and we, in all fairness, we've, have changed town managers, and there's always, you know, there's an adjustment period, but your request, whether they're wood chips, or, uh, moving a rock, or whatever you guys wanna do, that comes through the town manager. And I'm, I'm gonna guess that ninety percent of the time, as long as you have the funds to do it, she's gonna approve it. And she will coordinate it, she'll call whatever contractors that you need. It's probably not gonna happen the same day, but there is no public works. There's no one to call. There's nobody there.
It's calling any contractor, no different than you do at your house.
And, and Bridie coordinates with those contractors for whatever task it is. If you need something electrical done, and, and the money's there to do it, and she thinks it's a reasonable request, she's gonna coordinate that. That's, that's straightforward.
Okay. So during that meeting, back in May third, we, we talked, went back to the safety about the road, and we asked that, um, you know, we thought cars were driving too fast. Baseball season was coming up, that's where a lot of people, there's a lot more activity, so we wanted to get something in place. We came up with several different ideas, and, um, so we implemented the speed bumps. The road commissioner approved it, the town manager approved it.
That was after the board, when you brought it up, said, we didn't think that was a good idea.
No, on May third, it was never disputed.
It wasn't discussed?
Yeah, it was.
We brought it up, we clearly said we didn't think speed bumps were a good idea.
I, I think, I, I don't think you'll argue at this point, we, we have conveyed through Bridie that we are all of the opinions that speed bumps are currently a bad idea.
Well, remember, the other half of the plan was never implemented because there is no public works to do it.
No, that isn't.
That has nothing to do with everybody riding around.
There was supposed to be road signage to put around the bumps. The rocks were supposed to be moved out to the bumps. So regardless of the speed bumps or not, let's just move on from that.
Well, I think, we've been trying to get them out.
My question is, what are we gonna do for coming out? What is the safety measure we're gonna do?
But he didn't do them today because he was getting quotes and checks.
Because honestly, I think you created a greater risk with the speed bumps than you had without them.
Well, because they didn't, they didn't do the rest of the plan.
Correct. Doesn't matter.
So if you only implement half of the plan, then yeah, you're not gonna get the same.
But you, you've basically created a circumstance there, where you got people whipping around those speed bumps.
Well, remember, the, there was supposed to be a, a traffic thing there, so.
Well, I think originally you thought you were gonna be able to put it in the gate. Turns out you couldn't, because of electrical issues, I was told.
We could never put it in the gate, we knew the electrical was there.
I wouldn't have put them down until I had it all coordinated, because you, I think you created a greater hazard. It's just my opinion.
Well, remember, there was supposed to be like a thing in the parking lots and traffic barrels, so they couldn't just cut through the parking lot and go around it, and that was.
But there aren't.
Well, because we're not getting any response from the town. We asked for a bump sign, they gave us one sign that's like broken.
You actually, you just buy bump signs, you, you, again, order them.
Go out and buy a speed bump sign. I mean, I can.
I can.
Yeah, yeah, you can, through Bridie.
Through Bridie. Bridie can.
I mean, but did we not, Bridie asked about going over to public works and getting signs?
And then.
I mean, I know, understand the park is like a small priority for the town manager and the slithboard or whatever, but.
That's not true. That's not true.
That is not true.
That's a mischaracterization.
Yeah, that is a mischaracterization.
Then why, so why are we arguing about it, that we, and then July, or July thirty-first?
We can't speak for a town manager that is no longer here. You had a conversation with us, the town manager was here, you worked with a road commissioner, and now, August, you're now talking to us again. So for me, sitting here, I have, I don't know or see your whole plan of what you're doing. So if you're having a problem, if you're not telling us, we don't know. That town manager is not here.
And we get calls every day from people who have issues. So I mean, you could call any one of us and say, you know, it's been ten days, I don't have what I need. And, and I would call, would have, would have been either Lois or Bridie, and follow up.
Right.
But I think, I, I.
But I actually offered you, if you remember, right, when you said something about popping out the equipment, if Seth couldn't get it out to let me know, because my tractor would fit behind the fence. Because we didn't, that night, didn't know if the loader would fit in there, and I told you to give me a call if you needed, and I'd help you out with it.
For what part?
To take that equipment out of the back, with the removal of that equipment.
Oh, I thought that was degree.
No.
Degree, okay.
No, we talked about it, because we didn't know if you're gonna be able to get the loader back there. So, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we're not trying to be, there's no way in the world we're against that park. I mean, everything that happens is a very good thing.
And I can see for the, some frustration of some other members, that we all work very stressful jobs, and we're all very busy. And we're trying to take pride in our community by volunteering, and the additional, additional stress that's being created by not having public works, just not getting much attention from the town, or whatever, is causing the, the committee to basically say, you know, we're all ready to resign.
Well, then I think you should go back to your committee and let you know that nobody from the committee has spoke with the board about this, since May.
Came to the board.
In May.
Wait, I was here in May.
That's what I'm saying, but you haven't followed up. You've sat here tonight, we're all volunteers. We're all trying to make the town better, okay? You saw what we deal with. This is typical. And you have no idea how many phone calls we all field, and emails, and all sorts of craziness.
People screaming in your driveway.
Yeah, yeah. So, we appreciate very much what you do at that park, and you guys have worked really hard, and you've been really successful. But we, we move on to the next item.
Okay, so if you don't like the speed bumps, because I guess now you're saying you didn't.
I happened to go down there and sit and eat a slice of pizza, and I watched five people come in and whip around those speed bumps. So I came back to Bridie, said, I don't think those are gonna work.
But did you come at, at a game? When there was a game?
No, I, I, it was actually, it was a carload of.
And watch people try to.
It was a carload of baseball, uh, looked like girls playing softball. The guy comes in in a minivan, he's got four little girls in it, he whips around the speed bump, and they unload it, they all get out. And I said, that doesn't, that's not gonna work. And then I paid closer attention, and I can see now, we're actually wearing. Your field is.
The rocks were supposed to be pushed up.
Yeah, but you, anyway, implementing something that's dangerous because you don't have the other half done, to me, doesn't, that's not the way I would do it. I'd, I'd say, guys, we can't put the bumps in until a rock's in there. Can't do it.
It's one project.
Right.
It's a pro.
I'll take responsibility for not getting this done. It has been on my plate.
But.
But having said that, I would like to see moving forward, that coming into your season, we sit down. But having said that, I would like to see moving forward, that coming into your season, we sit down. And get a plan for next season. Have it in writing, have it put in front of the board.
Well, yeah, budget season is the time to have that ready, but.
Right, and then have, so then you have a plan, so then I can start in April or as soon as the snow.
But if you have requests that aren't being responded to by the town manager, you should feel very comfortable calling when I lost and saying, hey. Uh this is, this is going on to ten days or two weeks, I already got a response. And and this and this is important to us, and it will be important to us, but if you come in in May and we don't hear from you again until nearly August. As you can see, we've got all kinds of things we're doing.
As far as I know, Lois had you all taken care of, I mean.
Not really, but whatever.
So, well, I mean, it isn't a whatever, Jason, because as you have already said, we all have full-time jobs too. And we have so many other things dealing with, there are all pieces that we deal with besides having meetings almost weekly, bi-weekly.
We have the same time.
But all the time, we're all dealing with different things, plus working, plus everything else, so. When you are addressing something with the town manager and I have no feedback, I'm not gonna double check it. I'm in, I haven't heard from you, I'm assuming it's taken care of. If I knew it wasn't taken care of, then that's a different conversation, then, I mean, I reach out to Bridie when I have a question. You know, or this being down to where we're at, or what are we thinking, or you know, and it's no different than what we did with the previous town manager. So if people doesn't, don't come to us, we don't know to check on it.
But.
Cause I don't have time to check on.
Don't be afraid to.
So like, say that I listened to one of the the audios, so there was new rules in the park, the committee never installed the rules.
I have them.
But what, but I mean, shouldn't the committee review them? I mean, shouldn't the, I mean, you asked me, cause we just happened to be on the phone that day.
Yeah, I asked you.
And I made a recommendation on the scheduling, that we thought that prior rec should be able to schedule their games, I never mentioned that we should be able to jump over someone else on a makeup. I, we were against that, so if another event was already scheduled, we're not gonna, sorry, that game is gonna kick in. We were never in favor of that for sure, if there's another event, we we obviously are gonna honor that, but um but we never saw, the the document never got circulated.
What size, are you saying you don't, you don't like the rules or you just didn't know? Oh, I thought they were posted.
They are not posted, because I need to talk to Terry.
Okay, well, okay, but you have a laminated.
I do, I don't wanna post it though before we get all the stuff on the website, because if I post it and there's nothing and.
But should the, but should the committee members have a role in reviewing it in draft mode and helping establish what the rules should be?
You know what, you guys have all kinds of input, if you if you wanna tweak them later, they're just policies, they're not an ordinance.
Enforceable.
They're just rules.
They're just suggestions.
They're a suggestion.
They're just suggestions, so if after you review this first salvo, you wanna tweak it. Feel free to make suggestions and we might adopt them, so.
I'm just saying, it just seems like, in this case, it just seems like the committee is almost being, you know, a fourth afterthought and it's just one.
We we.
Until you read the rules, I wouldn't think that.
Yeah, you'll see that the, it was basically an attempt to try to get some structure there with things like smoking and pets.
Kind of everybody's topic.
Yeah, we were trying to, we actually were trying to do what you wanted.
Correct. I presume that's what it is, but.
But did you, did you wanna sit down and write them?
No, I, I mean, I just thought that that's what a committee does, they they kind of look at like.
I'd like it too, I would, um.
Well, you had requested some rules, we did, we 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 came up with some, if you wanna tweak them, let us know, we'll tweak.
But remember, those rules are no different than if you wanna put up a speed, a speed bump sign, a slow down sign. You can post that road right from twenty-three all the way to the water, two miles an hour. And there isn't a cop in the state that can enforce anything, everything we do is suggestion.
So is that what we want?
That's what I'm telling you, everything we're doing is, is.
They're just suggestions.
Yeah, it's pretty please, please do this.
So I think like back in, I think we mentioned it back on the May third, that we found, or probably was in, probably was in the mini meeting. But when we went to um get the baseball, the back softball field ready, there was still snow, we were like trying to snow blow it to get it to melt faster. But we found a bunch of hypodermic needles, like kinda where that porta potty would have been. And so for many years, we've always had concerns about like drug use and.
We have them right in town too, we gotta wear it on our street.
So if we have these ordinances, I mean, isn't there things like, like I know in my hometown elsewhere. If you, they have a park sign that says basically if you are in violation of certain like drug things or whatever, it's like double the penalty or what, I don't know.
It sounds good, but they can't do that.
Well.
If it's an ordinance, I mean.
If you have a police department and an ordinance, there's a lot of things you can do, we don't have a police department and these are not ordinances.
Correct.
Right.
That's the difference.
These are.
So how can we, you know, other than, you know, I'm not trying to argue, but I'm just trying to understand.
No, I appreciate that, it seems like we should be able to, right?
How do we protect people from not getting run over by cars? You know, I know we can build a road in the long term, but in the next two years or whatever, how do we come up with something that's gonna protect the people from this during the games? I mean, the whole environment is different.
Till the park come back.
When there's activities there versus when there's acti- no activities.
Well, you're not gonna be able to close your own back because you're not gonna be able to get your boat up there, you can leave, it's a boat landing, leave it open to boat traffic only.
But why shouldn't people be able to drive to the back field?
Because they're driving too fast, because you can't force it.
Well, it can be the boaters.
I don't believe it's anybody up there with a boat driving too fast.
Right, I mean.
We've been almost run over by a boat mover. So that kinda gets to my second, or one of our requests, we wanted to ask, can we do a survey, post something at the boat launch? And basically ask people to say like, basically like an in-outlog? So we can kinda get some factual information, like how many, what days do people go boating the most? Is it a weeknight, is it the weekend, is it this time?
Depends on the weather.
What's up?
Depends on the weather, I mean, we all drive by it all the time, I've driven by there and seen two boats and I've driven by there and seen twenty boats.
I've never seen twenty boats.
Uh they have the vast turn, I've seen it all the way to the front.
What are you going to do with that information, I I'm just curious.
Well, I think if we can use it, I mean, obviously we'd have to extrapolate the other months, but we can use it to plan what should be the allocated space for different things.
I mean.
So like.
I have no problem with you doing it, sorry.
I don't think it makes sense to have a whole back for like two boats and then some lady that can't walk from the back, from the front parking lot to the back, has to walk all that distance and not.
Well, you drop her off and then.
You can't look at it that way.
No, you can't.
Right, and the only, the only thing I can say, first of all, I think as far as doing, asking permission, whether you can do a survey, you can do any survey you want.
Yeah, no, you, I I appreciate you asking, cause you're gonna post a document on town property, but I don't have an objection to you doing your survey on town property, I don't.
Right.
I don't think you need a motion for that. If you wanna do that as part of the committee.
Nobody's gonna do it or not, it's different.
Yes, I mean, you can't require any, you might actually do better if somebody wanted to sit there in a lawn chair and write down what was going on.
Right.
Then someone will be contesting, who's the person ready to do it?
Well, no, I I it goes to Jody's question, what's the significance of this information?
Right.
Well, I think if we're really wanting to do this thing with the road and all this other pretty significant structural layout changes, then we'll have something like somewhat factual. I mean, just like when you go to catch a fish, a lot of times the main inland fisheries, they have like a little fishing thing, not everyone tags their fish, I mean, I'm sure they must factor in some.
No, I've I support the 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 new road because I think, just think it's a healthier way for that park to be structured, but are we gonna be able to do it? I, you know, we don't know yet what it's gonna cost, what funds might be available, it might not be feasible, that, it's just, it's not based on, I think there's a lot of boaters, I just think. That park is, it's a beautiful park.
It's a multi-use park.
It's a multi-use, it's a beautiful piece of real estate, we own a lot of waterfront down there. So I think before we develop it more in its current form, I think this board feels like we should look at, you know, a a structural change there. So that we're not driving through the middle of.
All them kids.
All those kids.
Because I mean, you got a lot of people to get down there to go swimming, you got a lot of people to get down there to fish, then you got a lot of people that.
Wanna go look at the water and eat a sandwich.
Right, I mean, a lot of people get down there for lunch, I mean, you have a lot of different people that are going to the back portion for the water.
And they have everybody's much right to do that as as your ball teams to have to play, it's it's a, it's a community asset. And we just wanna make it good for everybody, and we definitely don't want anybody to get hurt, and that's another, I think, side benefit to this road. But I I, we're not asking to stop everything until we get it done, but that's.
There's nothing wrong with you guys self policing. I mean, I can tell you when my kid, what I personally used to do, when my kids was in rec, if I was standing there watching a game and there was a car coming, didn't bother me to step out on that road. And it doesn't a lot of other people, I mean, I know a lot of parents that do that, you know, there's nothing wrong with telling people if they're driving by, hey, you're slowing, going too fast. I mean, me and Mr. UPS man had a very nice conversation last week about how he goes on and off the camp road right across my house every day. We'll probably have another one and I'm probably gonna call Bangor, but that's a, there's no, you can, you're allowed to do that, you don't need. I mean, you can't be exceptionally rude or whatever, but there's nothing wrong with reaching out to people and suggesting to slow down.
So if we, if we wanted to get that road in and we wanted to have it on the warrant next year. I don't know if that's how it's handled or if it's just the one budget, if we got all the figures together on what it would cost. Uh could we then come to you folks and have it placed on the warrant to see if the people in the town would do it? In interest of of the uh multi-use of this.
That's exactly how the process will go.
Or uh or safety of people that are walking there.
Yep.
Yes, it seems to me that would be a pretty important thing.
You've already got the board's hold, we we want this.
You wasn't here when we first talked about this, but the state, whether it's, and I'm not sure which organization.
Yeah, Department of um Ag and Forestry and Ag, and you have the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. Forest and Ag, we did not have a site um. A site review before April something, and so they wouldn't even.
That was the thing in Greenville that we were supposed to attend.
Oh, was it?
Yep.
Okay, and then.
Which honestly, I didn't even know about that, Jason, or I would have gone, cause I mean, I would like to see this happen myself.
Has promised to come and look, have I checked in with him? No, I was thinking, um, I don't know his.
What department?
Inland Fisheries.
If you need a hand with that, if you want, you, I will help you with that, I mean, it's up to your.
If we could get the paving scheduled, I have, I have a list of.
I know that, but I'm just offering, whether it's totally up to you.
We just don't wanna miss the queue again.
Right.
Because the other thing for me is what I would like, cause I mean, we've all kinda talked about this, but moving the road before the field. And then basically having a great straight down based where everybody swims, but at the same time, having the boat landing ramp moved over to that park. So you could go straight in, you could do the loop, the boats could park, everything would be separate from the field. So boat, boat traffic, water traffic, whatever would be down on that part, and then the only thing that would be over on the park side is the park. And then that would keep the boats out of, between the games and the games out of the boats and, you know, we we feel that that would be a nice.
And then that road doesn't even go through the middle, you could turn that into horseshoe pits or gymnasiums or whatever you wanna do.
We have a need to do the whole playground thing.
Sure, yeah, that piece of real estate could be used for something really positive.
If you could move the, even move the existing playground equipment up through the middle of the road, and then that way there, you could take between the ball field, the front field and. The soccer grass field, whatever you wanna call it, and the road, but that whole road frontage now all becomes a nice parking area. So everybody parks on the front that has anything to do with the rec. And then anybody that has to do with the water and the boating goes on the other road.
It would really help me if we had that kind of plan laid out so that when I talk to this person in Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, then he says, what do you want to do? Well, I wanna move the.
That's all he needs to know, we wanna.
In fact, I will work on, I'll work on a Google Maps document and we'll just kind of outline what we're imagining.
Okay.
All right, so at least you'll have something to hand him and say, well, this is what our thoughts are.
Yeah.
And I think one of the issues right away will be, there won't be enough parking, cause when there's.
You don't have enough parking now.
What's up?
You know, you guys fill the road.
You do.
Yeah.
I mean, you're never gonna, we don't have enough.
If you take away the back parking lot, then won't, you're gonna be.
Well, they, they can, anybody can park there, it's it's free parking, I mean.
No, but if we eliminate the back, they're not gonna be able to park back.
Well, it's, it's gonna be restructured, there's gonna be.
The playground, you've got more parking.
Correct, yep, you're gonna gain a lot of parking, cause you're gonna gain the road, you're gonna gain the playground, what you're eliminating, you're gaining.
There's also a lot of real estate that is not being utilized, it's forest, and so who knows what we can configure once we decide to tackle it.
So with the select board, cause for many years, even going way back when they first purchased, there was a thing about walking trail. So when they built the road, could like a walking trail be encompassed into that?
I think that road would have the.
Sure, sure.
People there.
Yep, picnic tables, I could see maybe some little hibachi grills, all kinds of things you could do. I'd mention that forever, I mean, you go to Kiwanis Park in Dover, you know, you go down there on the weekends and that's not the, if you go in behind the YMCA and keep driving to the back. All that is, is that little stream that comes down through there and a little tiny dam, and so I mean, it's it's no waterfrontage by any means what the town has angle has.
The other thing I'd get rid of.
Every weekend.
The porta potties, I'd get rid of them, I'd do a permanent station, a pumpable station like they're doing at the boat launches in Rockwood and and uh. But we don't wanna position that until.
Right, have a grand plan.
Yeah, an architectural design here, but I think we should be able to do that.
What about like going to the high school and 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 having a contest for for a design of the park and let.
If we felt we needed, we certainly could do that.
You know, I mean.
Who are in Ked or who.
In Ked.
Yep, yep.
Because I, you know, we may not be thinking of of all the wonderful things that that area could be used for, and it doesn't mean we have to do it, but we may.
Or you might, you might set it up so you could expand, like, well, we can't get to that this year, but maybe three years.
I'm not sure how much the ball fields are off the property line. The ball fields on the texture side of the property are are not very far from the property line.
So you're not gonna expand those, you're pretty well.
So there's nowhere, you can't go behind those as far as, you couldn't make a big loop all the way around the backside. You could not.
You could make a walking trail, which you're not gonna put in the road.
No road?
There's already like a more or less a trail, I would say, cause they mow it very nice and it's level and it's um. The long back part is right near the massive parts to the first corner, but the rest of it, right there when we had looked at it, we weren't gonna do any work there. We were gonna start at the back um, the back field and basically go parallel to the water line. So it'd be starting at the the back field, going towards the 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 road, towards the boat launch.
Yeah, yeah.
Then you'd be at the boat launch, cross over the parking lot and then make the drill over to the beach.
Okay.
I mean, I remember when my kids was little and we we used to help out a lot with rec, when you went to the back field, it was just a walking trail off from the, off from that fence line. Between that and the water. So we weren't gonna redo that route. But every year, that's what we all focused on was, you know, as we had a spring and a fall cleanup. And every year, we worked on going another foot, picking up brush, booking, making it more movable and, I mean, you can drive up through there now and it's, but I think if. If we slowly worked on that same process, that's how we would end up with, you know, down by the water's edge in different places. If we could slowly work on cleaning that up, you would have different areas, you could have a picnic table and people could use it for a lunch spot or or a family gathering or whatever.
We might be able to get high school kids one day a year when they do their.
Yeah.
Public service.
They're pretty good at picking the trash up off twenty-three, so I don't wanna steer them away from that, they do a really good job.
Well, they're gonna do that and the cemetery, so. There you go, great, fantastic.
But we're supportive, we're just, we we have a lot of irons in the fire and if you feel like you're not getting the response you need, please just email us or give one of us a call. But your requests need to go through Bridie and she has the authority to spend, to allow you to spend your money. And if if she has a concern, she'll bring it to us.
Now, before, when there was public works and part of the years, there was several pu- uh public employees, Peter Drummond, for example. But when it was raining out or when they had a lot of time, they would come down and kinda pack a few things up for this class. But that all that, their time always stayed within public works.
Correct.
So our budget at the rec level was always built on not paying for public works, cause it was in public works. So now you're saying if we hire a contractor to come and bring over a thing of wood chips, we're gonna get charged like five hundred dollars?
I don't know what's gonna come, but being aware of this.
Become like cost prohibitive, cause these are small tasks, but they're big, I mean, small task to him, a big, I mean.
You guys, how much, you guys built a field, what did it cost? I mean, you guys create an awful lot of tasks, you you were very creative in finding ways to get things done without spending a lot of money.
Yeah, but we can't do that every single time, I mean, that was, that was like a more mental thing, so.
But you do do things all the time, is what I'm saying, there are other, like with your wood chips, I mean, I. I can't remember, but was it Chummy or somebody was here and and one time and had mentioned something about, he'd hold some in the past. I mean, there's other things in the area that may not be a contractor that, you know what I mean, that we can get to help.
You've got some posters up about concert and they're, it's a attractive poster, you list, you've got a fifty-fifty raffle, you're selling refreshments. All of that is is utilization of the town's infrastructure, we don't charge anybody to to use our snack shack or, and I don't know. Does does the money from the fifty-fifty raffle go into the park's budget or where does that go?
It will, but we're holding, I mean, basically, well, this year worked different than last year, but last year, the credit union basically, cause they have a big campaign on helping.
cause they have a big campaign on helping, you know, feeding the hunger. I forget what their campaign is. But also the, one of the, the president of the credit union is on our committee, so she kinda helped get some of her employees to come out to do the concessions. But they flipped the whole bill themselves, the credit union did, and then they donated, I think it was roughly five hundred dollars back into the park. So all net proceeds, they donate back into the park, which should be in our, you know, donation account. So this year was a little bit different. She couldn't get as many of them to come and do it as many weeks, so we sort of partnered with other Sangaville nonprofits to sort of man the station, if you will, on different dates. Cause part of our strategy was to try, how can we get more people from different groups there all at the same time to really make it a more community venue? And so we thought we would try it this way. So I think on August twenty-first, like the food bank from the, the church down here, they're gonna come and do the concession stands for us. And I think maybe the fire department was supposed to do one, but we're kinda changing our model a little bit this year, just so we don't burn out the same group.
True.
But I think Mike's point is, the point is, is that, you know, that park belongs to all of us and so you're consent, you're making that money and putting it in your account. That's fine, but, but I, right? I mean, is that, isn't that sort of the point?
It's about budget.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, it offsets, it helps offset.
Right, so you're, you're taking advantage of, in a great way of, of what's there and making some money for your benefit. And so I, you know, I think.
But when we get to next year's budget cycle, the, the fact, the, the fact that we've saved literally tens of thousands of dollars by restructuring how we handle what public works used to do versus what we do now is actually gonna help you. Because if it turns out that this expansion or all of these things that we're talking about, if they cost a little bit more money, we have a little bit more money now.
And another thing to think of is the American Legion has asked that their money go towards, um, the Veterans Memorial Park or.
Yeah, we're concerned whether we could do this or not. Forty percent that the town will be getting for our share of that trust fund. Like I said, the church gets sixty percent, but we wanted, we were concerned that maybe we'd like to put some of that aside for the monument maintenance, which doesn't require a whole lot, but still. Plants, flowers, things like that. And then the rest of that will go to the rec department. Can we, is there some way we can structure that, the wording?
Sure. I don't know why you can't. I mean, it's your, it'd be your, your organization's donation. I don't think you can donate it for whatever use. You could donate it for only to be used for paving if you wanted.
It's important that you do it, because we can't.
We can't, but it's however you need to.
Yeah. Once we give you guys that money, you can do whatever you want.
Well, literally, actually, we can't. It goes into the general fund and then it's budgeted. It just becomes part of the whole, it's no different than your registration that you pay.
It would go into the general fund and help reduce in tax base.
Yeah.
Is what would happen. If you didn't, if you donated that to the town with no stipulation, it would get donated to the town and go to the general fund and it would help us keep our mill rate down.
But they could stipulate it.
Sure.
You'd have to do it before. I mean, you can't donate to the town instead.
Yeah, no, it has to be structured that way.
Talk to the trust though, I mean, you've got.
It's on your end if you're allowed.
If the trust will allow you to stipulate, that's the way you wanna do it.
Yeah, and so it goes directly to that. That'd be great. That'd be awesome.
Without you throwing a chair at me. I do have a question for you though. Have you, or has the legion thought of the possibility of moving the monuments and putting them on the monument field? And then that way there, as people are going to the field and to the gazebo, people would enjoy it.
We are as opposed to that as you'll ever find.
Okay, that's just a question.
Spent a lot of money and a lot of work getting that monument where it is.
I, I don't disagree with you, but I drive through here every day and I don't see anybody there. But that's my only thing is, as many times as I drive through this town, I can tell you, other than parades, I've seen in the last four or five years, maybe two people at that monument. Whereas if, my opinion is if they were up on the field with people being at the field, whether it be around the gazebo, if there was a place to put them, I think they would be, would be respected and used more than they currently are, other than something to drive by. That's my only thought.
Dale, I can tell you right now, if you go to Guilford or go to Abbott, you never see anybody around their monuments either.
Don't disagree, and I think that's very disrespectful, but I'm just saying if, so that's my thought is, instead of leaving it as the same thing that everybody else does, and we do have a monument field that is supposed to be as monumental as well. It's the veterans' field.
There is a monument there and I've, when I was there for the last concert, I went over and looked at the monument, but there were no people around.
Correct.
Yeah, and the other part of moving it would be, other than the fact that the legion really doesn't want that to happen, is that it would take up more space and we've just been talking about all the things we could do at the park. And if we, we have to, we would have to have a fairly large designated area for that, and that would just take away from it. So there, there are pros and there are cons. And I just think that we should leave it in the town where it represents our patriotism and our service to the, the country through the military. I think that it, it belongs there. When people go up the hill to go to Greenville, they'll look over to the right and they'll see the flag and they'll see the, the monument with all the names on it. And I just think it's important to be in the middle of the town.
You're probably not alone.
Okay, um, anything else?
Yeah, I was, we're done. Do you wanna help us put that? So Bridie, would we be able to get together to go over some of these other items? I mean, I know you're busy with roads and stuff, but.
Tomorrow weekend or?
I'll give you a week to get you through this paving would be nice.
Well, yes.
Could I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Since I came for, uh, the snow fence on the property of Mrs. Wells, will this be put on the agenda at the town meeting?
That's, well, I don't think we could compel Mrs. Wells to put up a fence. So it would, it would be a decision that.
How do I get to, uh, how do I get to have a fence put up there?
Yeah, it would be a decision that, that, for us to decide whether we wanted the town to expend money on a snow fence. That would be the question. And I think before we would make a decision like that, we probably would talk with the contractor that plows our snow and get an opinion and those sorts of things.
DOT.
DOT, and what, what right we have to go on this private property and put up a snow fence. All of that we'd have to investigate. But I, I doubt very much we can compel her to do it. It's gonna be us. If it happens at all, it'll be the municipality.
Will this be happening or will this just be tossed out into the air?
I, I personally will discuss it with our contractor and see what his thoughts are. That's probably the first place I would go. I don't know. Chris, Chris and Warren move the snow, so they would know better than anybody.
Yeah, well, the ones who, uh, the ones who plowed last year.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, our contractors.
Yeah, they're the ones that should be, uh, uh, notified, because they're the ones who went down and they're the ones who plowed and they're the ones who.
And they do our entire town. So they not only are familiar with your spot, they're familiar, I have a similar situation. I happen to own the field that it's occurring in, but the wind blows out of the north and even though it's not snowing, Warren has to go by and wing it back because it just totally fills the road.
Well, you don't just wing this back. They, it, it gets, this past year, it got so bad that they had to bring in buckets and they were there for better than an hour.
Yeah, I actually was over there that, when he was doing that. I know exactly what you're talking about. But that, to answer your question, I think the board would respond to the thoughts of the contractor. If the snow removal team said, boy, in these locations, a snow fence would really be warranted, that's, that's probably how that would evolve.
We would have to reach out to DOT.
And then see what we can do, yeah.
Even if I went to talk to her.
Oh, that, you can, you can have a.
Yeah, you can have a neighbor, a neighbor's discussion with her and perhaps couldn't solve it.
Without us.
Right.
She might say, uh, you can put one up. She might say, if you wanna put it up.
I'm not gonna put one up. Why should I put one up?
Well, because you don't want that snow.
The issue with the snow on your.
But that's not, that's not the problem. The problem is that snow goes into the road before it gets to my house and then it makes seven and eight feet deep solid brick walls. I mean, I couldn't see out my kitchen window or my living room window this past winter uh, for days because, uh, the snow was so bad. Um, if we got a real bad storm, the wind blows that snow right over and why should I have to put up with it? Why should I have to put?
It's just Maine. It's Maine.
We can't control what, I mean, we can.
I don't care if it's Maine, New York, or Alaska. It, it, the point is that, that it's a large, large, open area that wind comes in there and it blocks the road and it causes havoc with the motorists because, um, they can't get through there. Sometimes it's a single, uh, a single path. I've come, um, up here to, uh, the town manager one year and I was almost put off the road by a Haley's truck going down the long hill uh, before you get to the big farm on the left there. And, uh, he almost put me into the road, uh, I mean, off the road. If I hadn't been a good driver, I probably would have climbed one of those trees down there. But I, I could see him coming and I knew exactly what he was going to do. I knew he wasn't gonna give me any more room than what I could possibly use. So I slowed right down and he went by me like I was nothing.
In the county, they actually go out into those potato fields, like a hundred yards, put the blade out there and just cut a road. And that's their snow fence.
Yeah, state doesn't use snow fence. And I mean, I remember these things, that's up all the time. You can see that. Right out of the potato fields, that's what they do.
Yeah, I know, because my husband came from the county. And I've been up there many, well, when he was alive, but I've been up there many times. I know what a district county is. But I also know what Dotty Hill Road is in the winter time too.
Yeah, I, I snowmobile over there a lot.
Yeah, you just snowmobile right down Dotty Hill Road.
Yeah, take portions of it, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondents? Are there any more committee reports? I'm assuming we're done. Anything else, Jason?
Uh, no, we'll just, um, give it to Bridie to go over some.
Did you say tomorrow wasn't good?
Um, I'm not, I'm not totally sure. I mean, I can only do it cause I work in this field, so I.
I know. I work tomorrow afternoon. I only work a couple of hours here on Friday. I work my other job.
Well, you guys can go, you can text back and forth.
We can, we can do that.
So can we just brainstorm just real quick, like, for this upcoming fall, to be more proactive, we're gonna take out the speed bumps as soon as possible, but what can we do to sort of prevent cars from speeding? Cause on that field, it's actually worse, because there is no fence.
Personally, I think you have two options. You can self-police, because there is no enforcement.
I mean, that's not really.
Or you can stop people from parking.
Well, you can't. That's not gonna stop the boat traffic.
Correct, but it's gonna take your traffic from this level and you're gonna put it at this level.
I don't even think he can stop his people from parking. It's a public parking lot. Anybody can park there in Boston.
If you, oh, you can.
Well, you, you don't have any enforcement.
The only thing you can do is sign it.
You can ask them.
You don't have any can.
That's what I'm saying.
It's just a parking lot and people can use it until we reroute that road.
So like, why are main streets, when you go down different main streets, they have like a, like a barrel or a cone that has like a little kit on it that says slow, but it's a, it's a physical barrier in the road to physically make you slow down to around it, you know what I mean?
The problem with that is, is what are you gonna do about boat traffic? How are you gonna, I mean, you need eight and a half feet.
I mean, is, I, is a sign, I know what you're talking about, those.
Yeah, yeah.
Bright yellow-green children playing type thing, but it's not gonna impede them. There, there's still gonna be a straight shot to the water.
You're talking about putting it in the middle of the road.
At some point in the, I mean, you gotta put it in the road.
You got a guy with a party barge coming down through. Is, are you, is someone gonna man the barrel and move it?
Well, I don't know. I guess that's what we're asking. Like, what can we do? I mean, doing nothing doesn't seem like we're doing.
Well, these are all valid, you understand, these are valid concerns. You, you can't block that way. You can't put barrels in it. While we're playing the game, we're gonna put barrels there. You can't, we can't do that.
In my own opinion, if anybody coming on that property needs a sign to say who's killed there when there's many kids, I mean, they know.
It's a, it's like a fair. Sometimes there's a hundred kids there.
That's why I honestly, the only, the only way to get them to slow down, I think, is self-police. I mean, shaming in public of.
I agree with Dale on that. It's gonna be the most effective tool you got.
I mean, you could have a sheriff sitting there and he could stand there, but he can't write anybody a ticket.
They'd have to be very reckless before you could write them up.
Right. Cause that's what it would have to be, is reckless driving. I mean, you can't write a ticket for anybody for speeding.
Well, so, I mean, yeah, I just know that won't happen. I mean, there's just not, I have the right people to do it.
You must have people who work for the department. No, who work for.
Do you have any law enforcement people that maybe that shouldn't participate there?
They're all older now.
All older. I think Jamie would have been, I think Jamie's kids are out of the wreck now. They're in the school levels. I mean, what are you guys thinking? I mean, I just don't know what you're gonna do to.
Well, we, we, we wanted, we did wanna go with the barrel now. We wanted to go with this, I don't know how to describe it. It's a skinnier cone on a block pedestal.
Yep.
So the barrel is maybe like three feet, four feet across. So this one is, you know, like that, but it's much taller and skinnier with the little kid thing on it.
But where are you gonna put it?
In the road.
How's a boat gonna?
How's, how's, how are you gonna use the road?
Well, I mean, they still can get over it. I mean, two cars can pass each other.
Well, if it's not on a block, if, if, if I can still drive and then launch my party barge, I don't know why that would be a problem. I guess, I'm envisioning.
I see you doing this. I don't see any difference. I don't see how you can put anything.
Well, you could put that in your gate, because there's no electrical aspect of it.
If it's just something like that, you can have the.
Yeah, I don't know how you're gonna get, so is this something, you drive over it?
No, 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 you drive around it, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know the dimensions of the road specifically, but just say, for example, a car, how wide is a car?
That road is not made and is not wide enough for two cars to stay in the dirt.
Oh, yeah, that, that.
Up through the fields?
Yeah.
And beyond the grass?
Without being on the grass.
A truck with a boat? You think two trucks and two boats can pass each other?
I don't think it's too often, two trucks with two boats.
But if you put something in the middle, it has to be, because you're gonna steer everybody to one side, is what we're saying.
I guess what we wanted to do was, a barrel is too big. I'm not gonna get like certain coaches to go and carry this barrel and stick it there. We don't wanna leave the barrel there, cause we think people will just run over it. So we wanted to leave it there, so when there was the games and we knew there was a lot more people, then they would just put it there.
As long as people can still, I mean, if you're not gonna stop people from parking there and people still have to be able to go up through there to get a boat up through there and it doesn't.
It sounds to me like, I mean, I, I'm not putting words in your mouth, so you, you can disagree. It sounds to me like what you may be saying is, we'd like to shut down water access while we have a big event. It'd be safer. That's what we'd like to do.
Cause I'm not, to be honest, I'm not all that concerned with boats. I mean, to be honest, I don't think there's that many boats that come through our events. Maybe it's just the time of day or whatever.
So, uh, what is, who are these people then?
They're the, they can be some of the same parents of the, the kids, of the wrecked kids.
So you're pushing more to the fact as why we need to stop wreck parking in the back field?
I think it's just more, we need people to be more better drivers.
Yeah, I totally agree. And I think public shaming is probably the best you're gonna get. If, if, if a couple of you guys say, hey, listen, slow down. This is crazy what you're doing.
Those people are out on the field, reffing and coaching, they can't just stop practice to.
Doesn't matter. Your parents can do it.
For driving too fast.
Uh, you go.
I mean, it has to be something structurally that we can do.
I don't see anything structurally that you can do to slow down traffic that isn't gonna block traffic.
So can we do, instead of doing speed bumps, can we do speed ditches? That go the other way?
They're still gonna drive right around it, drive around it.
If people go around them, why?
Not if they're put in correctly, cause we could put a ditch on the, on the boat launch side of the gate, cause there's no cabling on that side. So we could put something there. And we could put one down where the current bump is and push the rocks out. So that there would be some type of physical impediment for fast tracking cars.
I think you're undermining a road, don't you?
I think at the end of the day, it's, you're saying that the issue is the rec departments.
Yeah, it sounds like it's your guys and gals that are doing the speeding.
There may be other.
Cause you said boats are really not even an issue.
Well, I'm just saying, like, there's not like, there's like a stream of boats coming through there all the time. If you look, there might be a hundred cars and maybe one boat comes through, if that. I mean, I, we would have to do the survey to, to know. I mean, we never really kept track of it.
I'd just say self-police.
People that drive by, cause they see a crowd and they're playing loud music, some kid, it's like, oh, what's going on? So they drive down there, zip down the road, couple of coaches yell them, cause they're staying at first base. The kid goes down, does a donut in the back parking lot, comes back up.
More reasons why we should not be parking down here. More reasons why we shouldn't be allowed to park.
These are just, I mean, this is part of having a public property. I know, we don't have, we don't have a police force, so we can't station anybody there to- And it's the same thing with your hypodermic needles. Like, I understand, it's a private place. People better go down there and do things they shouldn't do, but we don't really have an enforcement on it.
And I think the sheriff's department knows it, I mean, I do think-
Oh, they clearly, I mean, I personally have made sure they know, but we have the same issue with the parking lot right down here in the center of town that the sheriff's department sits in quite regularly.
But if it's, but if it's zoned as a cer- I don't know what the terminology is.
There is no zoning.
But if it's zoned a certain way, where the penalty is twice as much?
We don't have any zoning.
Who are you gonna enforce that? You're still at the same, we don't have an enforcement agency.
We literally had somebody living in their car down there for several months, we found out there wasn't anything we could do about that.
Yeah, well, we had people camping down there this summer.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah.
So it's- Nothing you can do about that?
Well, I called the police department, they came down and kicked them out.
They may have, but there's not, I believe they-
I don't think they had, they don't think they technically could. They may have gone down and suggested you need to move, but-
Well, there's, we can't just camp on public thing.
We would, this person, poor person living in their car.
Correct.
Well, there was other people down at the beach that, that camped there for, I don't know, a week maybe, before it was brought to my attention, but-
But, uh, I-
It sounds like there's really not much we can do with the road, it's-
I think you need to self-police or self-trap, self-park up there.
I just don't think it's possible, especially when it's the soccer season. I mean, there's just not enough parking.
You, you fill that road all the time. I mean, it doesn't necessarily matter.
Nice, oh, yeah.
There it is.
It's here.
It's here.
Coming back.
It's seven thirty, we would have been all done.
And we're not done yet, so.
Alright.
Okay?
So send me an email, Jason, tomorrow.
Yep. I mean, I think we have to kinda get our plan together, cause it's all scattered now, but I can go-
Thank you.
Good night, good night, thank you.
Night, thank you.
Uh, correspondence? Uh, request for additional agenda items. Hearing seeing none. Selectmen's concerns?
I have a couple.
Yeah.
Lucky for Short and Sweet, since I was starting with under light, we could pour. Um, I did get a voicemail that I called back, uh, Mike Kazazak called me, uh, the other night when we were doing the paving. He had, uh, he had seen the error because the company put the dots. Um, but when we paved last year, we never went around and filled from the paving to the driveway. So he let me know that, you know, nobody fixed that like they should, so he's got a three and a half inch-
Drop.
Drop. And, uh, so his concern was, you're gonna add more three and a half inches of paving and we're not gonna be able to get out of the driveway. So that was number one concern. Um, I did let, and he asked about the paving company and I let him know the whole deal, as far as what we've done and where, why we're using them. Very pleased, happy what we were trying to do there. Um, he did make quick mention about our new town manager and very much appreciated that, that we've done that. Um, the other piece was a reminder that his sign that they brought up for a couple of years has not been put up still.
The blind driveway.
Ah.
The hidden drive, it's like, hidden drive's in the-
It's laying on the ground.
Laying in the ground, I'll get it stand up.
In the new ditch.
So, hasn't been done.
It may have been broken off, though, I'm not sure.
Not sure either.
I have, I have some polls, so.
Yeah, so, so that's all, I, I mean, Short and Sweet, he was pretty happy at the end and, you know, and he, he goes, I know, I've told you, I said, I know, and I brought it up, so I'll bring it up again. So anyway, I let him know, please give our new town manager, with everything going on, a little bit of time, but I was quite sure that the sign would get put up in the near future.
I'll make sure.
So, that was that. Uh, the other piece, uh, the boat landing road, across from my house. Um, I came home Saturday and see the Smiths, who was here, at the meeting a couple meetings ago. They had taken the boat landing sign off from our property.
The state boat landing sign?
Boat landing sign.
Okay.
And moved it from one side of the road. And they had actually taken Jerry Peters' old post out of the ground, threw it on, and laid it on the ground. And made that hole bigger and put the boat landing sign in that hole. And by doing so, it is a hundred percent blocking our stop sign. And I informed them that they couldn't, they shouldn't have done that, that that's, you know, it's not up to them to make those decisions, and that's a state town sign and, you know, we would have to move that back. So anyway, um, after that, they was questioning about who owned the Center Pond Road. And I, as I've always been told, that is Mr. Brown's. So, and I told him that. And I did a little bit of research today and that is what that is. Mr. Brown does own that. But there is actually, so now they've marked the Center Pond Road as a private road, which is, okay, that's theirs to do. Um, but I think the people that are marking the side as par- private, what they don't realize, when I was doing my research, within the deed of that property, it clearly states that all cottage lot owners of Center Pond have an access on that road into the water.
On Mr. Brown's?
On Mr., on the Center, yep, the private road.
It's both in his deed and in most of the other deeds. I don't know about all of them.
Yeah, I haven't, I checked a few, it's in each deed that says they have access.
It's not just the camps on the east side.
Right, 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 to the left, to the right of the boat landing. It's any camp owner on Center Pond.
Has an easement.
And so when, when they were here, part of their complaint is the boat landing access.
Right.
Um, and I, I'm, I don't know the numbers, but I will tell you that every camp lot owner that I know that has a boat, that uses the boat landing, they go down that road. And every one of them has an easement.
So they are legally driving down that road to get to where they wanna go?
Yep. So, I wish I would have known that the night they were here, or when I had talked to them, but the next time I do see them, I'm gonna make sure they understand that. Because we were under the assumption-
That some of the camp owners-
A very narrow group of people.
Right.
That's, it's not narrow enough.
Right. It's, the, uh, the majority of the people that are using that road are supposed to be allowed to use that road. So, that's, just wanted to, it's very, I, I thought it was fascinating, actually reading it, so.
But it's not something we have to police or-
It's nothing to do with us, that's their deal, I just, where they come to us, wanting us to take that over. I, they need to understand that what they're complaining about, they really shouldn't be complaining about.
Right.
That's all I wanna make sure that-
Yep, we're all on the same page.
Same page that we knew.
This moving of the sign, though, to me, that's vandalism.
That's very bad.
Illegal, it's totally one hundred percent illegal.
That's, I think it's vandalism. And my concern is, we're gonna fix it, and next time you may not catch them when they vandalize it. Maybe they'll cut it down, or do, I don't know, I can't imagine doing what they did personally. So it, I just wonder, so I'm thinking maybe Friday should call the sheriff. A selectman witnessed this vandalism. I think if, if they, at least they got a visit from the sheriff's department saying, you know, you cannot do that.
Right.
They might not do it again.
Right, right.
Uh, and then whatever it costs us to put the sign where it's supposed to be, I think they should-
Right.
Pay restitution.
That's right, yep.
Do we have to reach out to MMA to make sure how that all, if that's possible, or?
I've got a call in, so, when-
I got a feeling, because you have a witness, the sheriff's department is probably gonna respond to this.
I would assume.
Because, uh, it's, you just can't do that.
And I mean, the sign, the, you can, I mean, the sign was on, it was on, cause the way that works is, there's a stone wall there.
Right, I, I went by it today and-
So, it's very clear, and the stone, the sign was on our side of the stone wall.
It was.
It was.
So, so they removed something from town property.
Yeah.
Put it, and actually removed a private citizen's property. Uh, it's just incredible that, anyway, so I, I would, I just think-
Yeah, they don't seem to understand, they don't own anything there.
No, but I-
They have an easement.
They have an easement, they're allowed to go through there.
There, that's right, that's- And as long as they pay their share of the maintenance, that, no, well, they-
No, it does say that.
Oh, it does? On their side, they have to pay reasonable maintenance. Are you kidding?
Yep.
But that would apply to everybody on the lake.
That's, that's what I, honestly, that's how the verbiage is, is in, is in Mr. Brown's parcel. It says, when it says that about all cottage lots, it says cottage lots of, on, of all Center Pond. And then it says how he can charge reasonable, I can't remember the actual word, but basically he can charge everybody a reasonable fee for maintenance of that road.
Wow.
So if, if you could, you could interpret that, he could flip a bill to everybody on the lawn, if you wanted to. Not sure how that would work.
If they're, but if they can access their camps through his road?
They all have an easement through his road.
To the water.
To the water.
To the water.
So if you're on West Road and you wanna launch your boat, it's written in, in that deed-
Yeah, yeah.
That you have a right to do that.
On that road.
That's amazing.
And I would imagine that if you rent your property-
Yeah.
That, that access goes to your rental.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, that is true. You're absolutely right.
Uh, it would be a very difficult thing to police.
Correct.
I mean, I guess he could put up a gate and issue keys, and people that don't pay don't get a key, but it's not a thing I'd wanna be involved in.
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah, I'm glad it's on that side of the table.
On our side, the road doesn't look anywhere near as bad as I thought it was going to be.
Our road is not in bad shape.
No.
It needs to be mowed, that's what it, a little bit of gravel.
Little bit of gravel, yes, like-
It's got a root or stomp, or it's got something, rock, I, I, I went down and I got the tree off that came down.
I was gonna drive down it, then I thought, mm, I better not do that, but you could drive it, no problem.
Yeah, the only thing is, is, you know, I wouldn't, I mean, you're, there's, it needs to be mowed, so, you know, it's, there's branches, it's gonna drive on your vehicle. But as far as the condition of our road is equal to what the other road is.
Do you want mowed?
Yeah, yeah.
I would say, just see what's involved in a selectman doing work like that. I don't know what it's gonna cost, but-
I have no idea. Maybe we can work that, or no, we can-
But if you're more comfortable with us knowing it or being involved, because he's right there, he's got a good piece of equipment, so.
You got, we really, we got two options. You can call and get a price if you want, but somebody's gonna have to cut it and chip it, or cut it and haul it off, cause there's no place to-
Yeah, it's just a-
It's all gotta be one or the other.
Oh.
Or, where that bloom flail, I think, with the flail head, I think I can take it. And I think I can take it up all the way, so it should-
Oh, that'd be great.
And there is a clause in our easement that requires us to do some maintenance-
Right.
Every once in a while, so putting in some, uh, gravel where needed and cutting this brush would kinda reset the clock on that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And, so.
Well, and truthfully, the road doesn't look that bad if you've been to other boat lots.
Some people would say it's gonna get used.
From, well, from Marvin's, the only thing that we need to, and I, I wanna get out of here, so I don't really wanna keep going, but from Marvin's driveway to the boat land itself. The problem we have there is those camp owners have plowed, or that gets plowed. So, and I don't think it's so much the plowing, but it's putting traffic on it too early in the year, and that's what's caused the issues. So, I think a box blade or whatever, I mean, we could smooth it up for now to get through the summer, but in the fall, we need to have an open discussion of what we're gonna do. Because now we're at two roads that we have, that are, should be summer maintenance only, and we have residents that are plowing. So-
Right, they're, they're-
And then they get used during mud season, and that's not what we want.
Plus, plus they're private ci- citizens doing work on our road.
Correct.
Yeah, and that is not-
They can't do that, right?
But I'm more worried about the mud season damage other than, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
The road, if we're gonna, you know, clean it out, fix it out, if we could shut it off so nobody can drive on it in the spring until June, like we're supposed to be. Um, that road is fine and will last a lot of years without a lot of, a lot of maintenance, so.
Wow.
Uh, one last thing, uh, and this has to do with the West Road. Um, we talked about this last time, I, I guess, um, Mr. Burgess's stakes. Turns out that that property actually isn't owned by Lance, it's owned by-
His ex.
His ex-wife. I guess his son lives at that address, I don't know that for sure.
That's what he told me, that it was his son's house, the deeds in-
When I discussed this with Lance, he was very familiar with it. Uh, and I would say he, he defended its presence. Uh, so he's aware of it, but it isn't actually his land, I guess. Um, but we are now all aware of it, and it's, I took a picture of my vehicle, and you can see what is really the center line, okay? So I'm not, I'm not crowding here. My concern is, you got this line of stakes here, there's no reflectors on them, there's no purpose for them to be there. If, if two vehicles meet each other, you could have property damage up there. And I think we're on the hook for it, because we know that this hazard is there.
And, um, you sent us all, the, the portion where it says, once we're aware of that, that it, it, it's our responsibility to, yep.
And I, I actually said to Lance, I said, Lance, if that was brushed, we would require, required to cut it.
Right.
I mean, we couldn't leave it there.
No.
Uh, or if somebody dumped a refrigerator that close to the road, we would have to remove it.
Right.
Uh, so, but again, I think this is kinda similar to this vandalism. We could go up there and knock them all down, but they're just gonna put them back.
No. Do you think they will put them back? Do you think?
There's no reason to think they won't. I asked them to take them down.
And he won't take them down?
No, and in fact, I invited him to come in and talk to us, because I said, you have never expressed what it, you know, he, he mentioned to me once in town, obviously, he thought the road had moved over the last eighty years. And maybe it has, maybe it hasn't, I don't know. But to just create a road hazard, I don't really even know what this accomplishes, because we're not grading again. All this does is create a hazard for motorists up there.
Right. Doesn't establish any- No, property line, or, or, nothing.
And it's certainly within the easement of a three-rod road.
Right.
Uh, so I, again, I think maybe we need to get, you know, law enforcement involved and say, look, there's a hazard here, we've asked them to remove it, what can we do?
I've asked MMA, you know, should we, well, I've got a call in.
Okay.
Should we remove them and, and bill the person? Should we send them a letter, give them a chance to remove them on the, oh, I mean-
Okay.
My own personal thought is kinda what Mike was saying, is you send the sheriff up and say, you got twenty-four hours removal, we aren't.
Yeah, you've, you've created a hazard.
If that right there was a, a dead tree laying that close to the road, we'd have cleaned it up.
Yeah, and if every time we cleaned it up, he put another tree back?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or you, how many times would you do that?
No.
No, this is a deliberate hazard.
Right.
Uh, and so I, I, rather than go up and pull the stakes out and then have them come back again in a week, I'd like to resolve it. I would prefer that they take it down and come talk to us and see what it is, but-
But there again, you're not gonna hire with us, if we hire even our road commissioner and he sends somebody out there, we're gonna receive a bill to remove that.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, and even though it's a piddly little job, it's still, it's gonna be a minimum, it's gonna be a couple hundred dollars or something.
Couple hundred.
Yeah.
So, and then you're gonna get into, you destroyed my property, these stakes belong to, you know, I don't want, I just want them to remove them, because they shouldn't have put them there in the first place.
Right, that's-
If we can get them to do it.
Right.
Now, my other question, I guess, is, cause this is an add-on your MMA question, if you haven't already done that, but, so, I know, sorry, Bernie.
That's okay, honey.
But with the sign issue and now this issue, we have two different things, and citizens have deliberately done, that we're gonna spend town funds to correct. Or, there's a chance that we're gonna spend town funds to correct. So, as far as the MMA is, are we allowed to bill? And if we are allowed to bill, are you allowed to add it on to their tax lien, or, or use it in that same, you know, was there anything there, so you actually know you're gonna get paid?
Yeah, if, if you're, if we're legally allowed to correct these issues and simply put it on their tax bill, that's pretty easy for us. We're gonna get the money, and they're probably gonna stop doing it.
Yep.
So, but if, but I, that's, I don't know if we can. That's a pretty powerful tool.
Can I ask, because George asked me how we could do that. I looked in the state's edges, I couldn't find it, so I called MMA, they said you can't. But, maybe if I, oh, so that was with cleaning up a property and that type of thing? Yeah, it was, um-
I think in the past-
He wanted to remove trash and- Right. Hire somebody to embill, embill them, and I didn't, I said, I don't know what the mechanism is, George, I'll find it.
Yeah, we're not, we've had that conversation before about, we will, uh, my personal stance is, we will never remove anything off somebody's property. Because that, you're getting into an opinion of what's trash and treasure.
Right, true.
And I think that could get us into a-
Right.
I like the other course of action.
Plus you're on someone else's property.
Right.
Now, we have an ordinance in place. If, if we can fine them, a penalty for not.
Correct, for non-compliance.
Non-compliance of an ordinance of.
Which we have done.
We have done that in the past.
Okay.
But it was for non-compliance of the ordinance and it was.
And a daily fine.
Daily fine.
Yeah, it was fifty bucks a day or something. It was pretty steep.
It adds up pretty fast.
Yeah.
And it went on their tax bill.
Well, it was a, it was a lien, I mean.
Yeah, but there was no escaping it.
There was no escaping it. But that's, it was a penalty due to.
Non-compliant, it was, yeah, breaking the order, ordinance.
Correct, non-compliant with the ordinance. The code enforcement said there was a violation.
Yeah.
They wouldn't comply, so they started getting fined.
That's right.
And that fine.
Honestly, that's a.
Yeah, and it required.
You could push that ordinance issue and cover that.
I think that would fall under that.
Yeah.
Cause that's a nuisance.
But George has to go and talk to them first and he has to send them a letter. Then it has to be a registered letter.
But you, once you get it going, at least.
There's a process.
I, I guarantee you that you're not gonna get one fifty dollar a day charge.
Yeah.
Once they know that train is on track.
That, it does take a, you gotta get, start the clock ticking.
It seems to me it's very easy for a lot of people to complain and create issues and problems and there's only one way to solve a lot of this stuff. And if they don't feel some type of a pinch financially, so I'm gonna stop.
Well, it's just such a brazen thing, both those examples. I can't imagine doing it.
It really is.
I, at least the, the, the boat sign, I understand the strategy. This, I don't even understand the strategy. There's.[1681.25]